Available, I would encourage everyone to find your seat. We're getting ready to go here, we're just waiting on a few people and then we'll call ourselves Afternoon, Ms. City Secretary, you got everything you need over there ma'am?
Yes sir, we are ready to go and we have Johnny Glick Assistant City Secretary, who's going to help run this meeting today.
Alright, afternoon Johnny. Okay, we're gonna officially call ourselves to order here today and move into our meeting. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for attending your meeting. It's an honor and a privilege to get to sit here before you today. It's a thick one and we have a few topics that can become controversial. We will do our best to make sure that that does not happen here today and that we continue to represent the city as a whole and that we work from good old fashioned common sense. If you would, we're gonna start off our meeting the right way, so I'm gonna ask if you guys would stand as we have Trevor Brown offer the prayer, the invocation, and then remain standing for the pledges.
Yeah, let's bow and pray. Father, we come to you today having the words of Easter worship still in our minds with hearts still carrying the perspective of the empty tomb. So God, today as we gather for business, as we gather for work, as we lead our families and our homes and our city, we pray that you would give us that perspective. We pray your blessing over those gathered, your protection for us as we consider these things, we pray your wisdom would fill each of us and lead us and guide us in all that we do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you sir. If you'll join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag as well?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Okay, we have several proclamations here today, I think we have six. So we have some folks that we get to honor, appreciate you guys giving us a moment to do that, we'll take a few photos, so if you're here today, we'll call you up, we have a few names of who we'll invite, you bring anyone that you've brought with you and we'd love to take a photo with you before you sit back down, so gentlemen, will you meet me downstairs and, oh Councilman Simpson, let's start with yours.
Our first proclamation today is for Mental Health Awareness Month and this represents several organizations, Adrian Gonzalez from the Panhandle Chapter of National Alliance on Mental Health Illness, if you're here, if you'll come forward, and anybody else with any of these organizations. Panhandle Behavioral Alliance, Amarillo Area Mental Health Consumers and Agape Center, and American for Suicide Prevention Local Chapter. Whereas mental health is vital to the overall well-being of every individual and one in five Americans experiences a mental health condition each year, including many within our own Amarillo community, our families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and whereas these challenges also significantly impact the health, safety, and prosperity of our community, and whereas untreated mental illness is often linked to substance abuse, academic and workplace challenges, family dysfunction, homelessness, and suicide, issues that significantly impact the health, safety, and prosperity for our community, and whereas education, understanding, and access to treatment are critical to improving outcomes for those living with mental illness and fostering a more supportive and informed community, and whereas national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness lead the charge in raising awareness and promoting better mental health services particularly during Mental Health Awareness Month each May. Now therefore, we mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim May of 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Amarillo and urge all citizens to join in efforts to raise awareness, end stigma, encourage treatment, and support mental wellness in our community.
In the US, mental health and illness affects one in five, but in Texas it's one in four. Many people are lived experience and don't always share. The more we share our stories, the more impact we can have. Mental health is just like any other health. Without mental health, we cannot be fully whole. Thank you so much for supporting this cause, there's gonna be a lot of great events, if you go and follow Panhandle Behavioral Health Alliance online, there's gonna be a lot of great events celebrating mental health in May. Thank you.
Let's get you guys a little bit closer please. And then scoot back just a touch, everybody step back, yeah. And one, two, three. One, two, three. Great, thank y'all.
Up next, we have Salvation Army Week, so Major Tex Ellis with Admiral Corp Salvation Army, if you have anyone with you, do I have to come up? Whereas the Salvation Army's only business in this community of Amarillo, Texas, as everywhere, is still human business, undertaken with joy for the family of humankind to the greater glory of God, and whereas through sound, innovative, and professional services, the Salvation Army serves the people of Amarillo with unshakable faith in all, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities, and whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all the residents of our community with neither salvation nor other condition prerequisite, nor expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community support. Now therefore, we mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through 18th of 2025 as Salvation Army Week, and Amarillo and urge all citizens to join us in saluting the steadfast men and women who bind up the brokenhearted and renew the heart of our community by their quiet service of compassion.
Wow is the only word that comes to mind, but I do just wanna say thank you to the community, the leadership, the support you sow, the Salvation Army here in Amarillo. We've been here since 1904. That means two things, it means there's a need and there's the support behind the Salvation Army to meet that need, and we thank you for it. Salvation Army Week is as much your support as it is for you to recognize us, so again, we salute you and we say thank you. Come out May 14th during Salvation Army Week, we're having an open house that day, you can come see what goes on behind the scenes and hear about all the programs and services that Salvation Army does throughout the year. Again, thank you, God bless you.
Anybody here that's related, go ahead and come up. I was actually honored to attend their 100th celebration of this, so it's super interesting, I will tell you that. Yes, it is, you're right, okay. Whereas originally founded in 1925 as the Lano Estacado Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, under the leadership of its first regent, Ms. Avery Turner, Mary Honeyman Tenick, the chapter was upheld the core values of patriotism, education, and historic preservation, and whereas in 2019, the Lano Estacado Chapter merged with the Arredondo Chapter, chartered in 1972 to form the Molly Goodnight Chapter, thereby continuing its longstanding legacy, and whereas over the past century, the chapter has enriched the community through historical preservation efforts, patriotic programs, educational scholarships, and the establishment of a Children of the American Revolution Chapter, and whereas the 85 members of the Molly Goodnight Chapter have contributed to significant projects, including the relocation of the historic 1929 Doughboy statue to the Texas Panhandle War Memorial, and annual awarding of over 28 Daughters of the Revolution Youth Citizenship Medals to local eighth graders, and whereas the Molly Goodnight Chapter continues to honor and support local veterans through restoration efforts at Lano Cemetery and other community-driven initiatives, and whereas the Molly Goodnight Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution in Amarillo, Texas will celebrate its 100th anniversary on May 4th, 2025, marking a century of dedicated service to community and the preservation of our nation's history, and whereas the Molly Goodnight Chapter will commemorate this historic milestone with a centennial celebration on April 5th, 2025, by bringing together members, fellow Daughters of the American Revolution chapters, state Daughters of the American Revolution representatives, and local dignitaries. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, recognize and commend the Molly Goodnight Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution for a century of unwavering commitment to patriotism, education, and historic preservation, and extend our deepest appreciation for their contributions to Amarillo. Thank you guys.
Mayor, Councilman, and City of Amarillo, I accept this proclamation in the name of the Molly Goodnight Texas Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution. We are so thankful that you're here and we thank you for this proclamation, and the only thing that I have that I want to remind you of, coming up is May the 8th, at the War Memorial, at 9:30 we will have taps that we will remember VE Day, and 1,100 men and women from the Texas Panhandle gave their all in World War II. So for, it's the 80th anniversary, if you can believe that, at the end of World War II on VE Day, and we want to remember those people, and I would beg you at that time to come help us honor, it's an evening event, 9:30 is taps, thank you.
Whereas, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration says that alcohol is the most frequently used and misused substance in the United States, especially among people who are of college age and younger, and whereas according to the 2023 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, millions of people in the United States aged 12 or older currently use alcohol, and whereas alcohol is the largest contributor to leading cause of death among young people in America. Alcohol misuse strains healthcare, criminal justice, substance abuse treatment systems, and alcohol misuse impacts educational and workplace productivity. Whereas, social pressure and culture norms have contributed to the excess alcohol use and that with comment and support, these other substances used and mental health issues can be prevented, and whereas the focus of Alcohol Awareness Month is to assist in prevention of substance abuse and promote mental health and through alcohol awareness enough, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about that and can do, create healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping prevent the problem today. Now therefore, we mayor and city council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, has hereby proclaimed the month of April 2025 as Alcohol Awareness Month.
Hello again, I'm Dr. Shannon James, I am the Executive Director of Andrea's Project. Easter 2019, we lost a vibrant and beautiful soul. It's been six years. Through that tragedy, her family created Andrea's Project. And through Andrea's Project, we're able to educate so many to help prevent this from happening to any other family. We have a youth empowerment academy coming up to help train our youth to be peer leaders in this prevention. Make sure and follow us on Andrea's Project on social media as we work to change the culture when it comes to alcohol. Thank you.
some people that sometimes have to leave, so there will be some seats that open up, if you guys will hang tight and then we'll try to identify any open seating and make sure everybody can sit down for a long meeting. Chris Pittman, Panhandle Active Transportation and Health, if you guys will come forward. Chris, you got anybody with you?
I was hoping not, so.
Okay.
One bike up there for someone else.
Yeah. If you rode a bike here, come up and take a photo with us, or a scooter or anything else. Alright, I'm gonna jump into this one. Whereas, the simple act of riding a bicycle brings immense joy, fosters a sense of freedom, promotes overall well-being for individuals of all ages across our great city, whereas bicycling not only supports personal health and wellness, but also offers a sustainable alternative to motor vehicle travel, reducing traffic congestion, conserving energy, and improving the quality of the air that we breathe. Whereas, the city of Amarillo proudly joins communities nationwide in celebrating National Bike Month throughout May, a time to highlight the many benefits of cycling. This year's observance includes Bike and Roll to School Day on May 7th, Bike to Work Week from May 12th to the 18th, Bike to Work Day on May 16th, and promoting active, healthy, and sustainable transportation. Whereas, cycling plays a meaningful role in shaping healthy, connected, and thriving communities, it stimulates local economies by drawing visitors, supporting businesses, and enhancing the livability of our neighborhoods through vibrant, people-friendly spaces, and whereas the city of Amarillo calls upon our schools, local businesses, and community organizations to lead by example. Through hosting bicycle safety events, raising awareness about cycling as a safe and enjoyable activity, showcasing many treasures of our parks, trails, cultural landmarks, these stakeholders help weave bicycling into the daily fabric of life, and whereas these efforts support Amarillo's steadfast commitment to creating a safer, more active, and inclusive environment, one where residents and visitors alike can thrive in a city that values health, connection, and forward-thinking transportation choices. Now therefore, we mayor and council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 2025 National Bike Month.
Tell you what, it sure is lonely being up here, kinda scary, but that's how it feels on a bike too, in our city, and just as we can talk about pedestrians and those walking downtown, as being an indicator species of how healthy our downtown is, I think likewise we can use cyclists as a measurement to how healthy our city is physically, mentally, and financially. I invite you all to ride your bike, and also check out www.amarillo.bike and learn about some different events and how you can participate in National Bike Month. Thank you.
Just Johnny.
Just you and Johnny, okay. Alright. Whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government, serving as the professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies at other levels in government. Whereas Municipal Clerks provide critical services such as maintaining public records, preparing meeting agendas and minutes, administering local elections, supporting transparent operation of government. Whereas, the work of Municipal Clerks promotes citizen engagement, government accountability, and community trust through accuracy, impartiality, and dedication to democratic principles. Whereas, communities across the nation annually set aside a week in May to recognize these very important, essential parts of our responsive local government, and whereas the city of Amarillo's Municipal Clerks continually strive for excellence in the administration of their duties through ongoing professional development, including participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, conferences hosted by state, national, and international organizations, and whereas it is most fitting that we recognize and honor the dedication, service, and accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, now we therefore mayor and council of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the week of May 10th, Municipal Clerks Week.
We just wanna say thank you to all of our citizens of Amarillo, it is truly a labor of love and we are fortunate to get to serve in the roles we do. We also, I wanna brag on Johnny Glick, our Assistant City Secretary here in a few months, she will be a certified municipal clerk too, so we hope that we are serving Amarillo well and helping you be the link between you and your council. Thank you.
your patience in letting us do that. It's a tradition and it is honoring to the people that we're trying to make this whole exercise about, which is you, so our city, our community, our citizens. Is there anybody here who doesn't have a chair that would like one? I see a few up here on the front row, don't worry, we won't call on you even if you sit there, and feel free to move around and do what you need to, we want you comfortable. Ms. City Secretary, we're gonna move into item number six, announcements, do we have any announcements today?
We've got one announcement, mayor, we just wanna let council know as well as our public, Monday, the 28th, this upcoming Monday at 4:00 PM, we will be honoring our JA BizTown junior mayors, and so we look forward to having them here, we invite everybody, it's just going to be a ceremonial event, they'll get some badges, I think one of them might get to gavel in and we'll have a ceremonial meeting for them, and so we invite anybody that would like to join us and celebrate these little mayors.
That's a great announcement, so that is, once again, just in case we were catching up, that's Monday, this next Monday at 4 o'clock, right here in the council chamber. JA BizTown does a fantastic job of taking local businesses all over town and showing our fifth graders all across, really the Panhandle, but mainly here, how business works, what it's like to be a CFO, a CEO, a mayor, a police chief, it opens their eyes up to what maybe some of them have never thought about, which is like, what can I be one day? And so being able to bring all 35-plus mayors in here, let them get their photo up on the dais, a few of them will get to hit the gavel, hopefully not too hard, and so we would love it if the public would come and support those little mayors. No other announcements, Ms. City Secretary?
No sir.
Okay, our favorite part of our meeting, public comment. I trust no one showed up for public comment, but on the off chance that someone did, we are gonna hold public comment and I would hand it over to Ms. City Secretary if you'll walk us into that.
Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting, your input and your opinions are important to us and we are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll notice your time turns red on the screen and that will alert you to finish up your comments. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. We have one public hearing today, and if you are here to speak on that item, we ask that you make your comment during public address or the public hearing, but not both, in order to keep accurate records. It is your decision during which you want to speak. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and whether or not you live in the city limits, and if you're addressing city council on an item, please state your position so it may be reflected properly in the minutes. If you're speaking on an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. Council may respond with statements of fact, they may ask that the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the city manager, who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. Before we call our first speaker, let the record reflect that we have 32 individuals that have provided written comments in support of or against Agenda Items 8D and 10B. These comments have been provided to the city council and will be added online with the minutes. Again, thank you for being here today to share your thoughts with the city council. At this time, I will invite Angela Workman up, and next up will be Broden Pogue.
While Angela makes her way up, if I could, we have 29 people signed up here to speak today. We will also allow anyone that would like to speak that didn't sign up to speak afterwards, so we will do that by raising of hands and we'll probably go in somewhat of an order. It's gonna be very important that as Ms. Glick runs this meeting, that you understand you only have three minutes today, and we appreciate your respect for everyone's time here today as we will run the entirety of the meeting, so please wrap up your comments at the three-minute mark. Thank you ma'am for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Angela Workman, I own Aunt Eek's Books and Curiosities down on Sixth Street. I'm an independent used bookstore, I'm here to speak for the Amarillo Library Board and support the, I'm not speaking for them, I am speaking in favor of them and their decisions on the books that they either reclassified or just reshelved where they were. It is very important to have freedom when choosing books for adults and children, we need to see people who look like us, who we relate to in our books, it is also important to have things that are controversial. This controversy makes us better at critical thinking, critical thinking is much needed in the world today. Banning books or limiting the access of books is a slippery slope, whenever you start it, how do you stop it, where do you stop? I feel like this is a topic that should land more on parents or caregivers of children to decide what they're going to read and how they read it, and maybe- And maybe if it is something controversial, they read it with their children and discuss it. The, one of the books in question is Toni Morrison's Bluest Eye. This book was written in 1970. It's actually older than I am. And I don't know, I haven't seen anybody that has, has come up for trial and quoted that the Bluest Eye made them do what they, they did. I don't know. It's a wonderful book. It does have very controversial things in it. I mean, it has rape and incest and, and things like that. But those are real things that happen every day. The statistics are staggering. One in five women in the United States will be sexually assaulted in their lifetime. And having books that show us how other people have dealt with those, those things helps us to be able to carry on with life. When we can see characters in books or movies or whatever that have gone through things that we have gone through, then it helps. The same with Gender Queer. It's a wonderful book that just talks about one person's journey into becoming who they are. And statistically speaking, LGBTQ youth have a very high rate of suicide. I feel like if they had more things that they could read and look into to make them feel more at home in their bodies, then they would be a little happier in life and not have that stigma about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Up next is Broden Pogue and on deck is Harper Metcalf.
Hello, my name is Broden Pogue. I'm a junior at Amarillo High School, a superintendent scholar, and a member of the National Honor Society. I'm speaking on item 8D for the Retainment of the Bluest Eye and the Everybody Book. It is precisely when a child's brain starts to develop that exposing them to ideas and information is most important. If a child grows up with one view, one perspective, one filter, then they will be unable to properly explore, learn, or relate to anyone outside of their immediate circle. When this immediate circle is harmful, that is when dangers arise. How does slavery develop? Because society grew up with one perspective, that people of color were inferior. How did the masses put Hitler into power and accept fascism? By accepting only one specific view and villainizing all others. And do you know how his fascist regime facilitated this? By targeting Jewish authors and banning any books deemed un-German. When books are banned, it robs students of the chance to learn, to be exposed to different ways of thinking. And when these things are robbed, the world not only becomes duller, but dangerous. What is a girl supposed to do when she has her first period and her parents won't explain why? And when turning to the library, the books about this topic are gone. What should a boy who has grown up in an atmosphere where everyone around him hates gay and trans people do when he's confused about where his gender and attraction lie? These are not overexaggerations. These are real. Real scenarios, real instances, real life. And if these books are banned, then students will suffer. According to a study by the Pew Research Center, around 62% of Americans were Christian in 2024, with most of them residing in conservative states. Considering that the groups arguing for book bans are conservative, it is safe to assume that most of the people in them are Christian, go to church, and bring their children with them. The argument that these groups use for book bans is that children should be protected from inappropriate and harmful content, with this content typically being sexual, violent, or containing political ideologies. Yet, my experience in church has always consisted of two things in particular. A preacher preaching that we are sinners and occasionally portraying a very vivid description of the atrocity that is hell, and a ready-to-access Bible which contains extreme sexual and violent content throughout the entirety of its papers. The most ironic part of this whole situation is that proponents for book banning state that it is for the safety and health of their children, yet are more than happy to take their children to church and raise them in an environment which gives them ample access to a book containing violent and sexual, sexual content galore. Yes, parents are with their children to guide them through this reading process, but this is the exact same scenario as when a parent takes their child to the library and oversees where they go and what they pick. It is simply not okay for the same people who argue for book bans to be completely fine with their child having ready access to a book that includes topics such as bestiality, incest, and the mass genocides of thousands of people, while at the same time say that books about sexuality and racism is harmful for children. Thank you.
Up next is Harper Metcalf and after Harper is John Hints.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Harper Metcalf and I'm a resident of Amarillo. My statement today is on behalf of the Amarillo Reproductive Freedom Alliance. First, we would like to extend our gratitude to our library staff and those serving on the library advisory board for their thorough and conscientious review and the time they spent ensuring they made the right decision for our community. We now ask you to respect and uphold that decision-making process, which was based on professional judgment and community input, not politics. Attempting to restrict access to these books does not make children safer, children and families in Amarillo safer. Instead, it is a thinly disguised attempt to silence marginalized voices and we see right through it. This is not about care, it's about control. Reading and sharing stories about sexual violence, like the Bluest Eye, are crucial to the work of de-stigmatizing, increasing awareness, and prevention. They make survivors feel safer to come forward and help others develop empathy. Honest, factual representation of anatomy and biology and discussions of consent and bodily autonomy like those in the Everybody Book decrease shame and secrecy. Research clearly shows that when students receive comprehensive sex education, they are less likely to be a victim or perpetrator of sexual or dating violence. Gender Queer is a true story of a young person's lived experience. Who are we to say that this is not valuable? Our LGBTQ+ and gender expansive community is just as deserving of seeing themselves in books as anyone else. Censoring these stories harms everyone and we must push back against the rhetoric claiming that they don't want to ban books, just lock them up. Any step towards allowing the government to dictate what we read is a step in the wrong direction. Books aren't always meant to make you feel comfortable. In fact, many of the best will not. Simply because a book does not hold value to you does not mean it couldn't be life-changing or life-saving for someone else, especially our most marginalized communities who are less likely to see their experiences mirrored in media. We need more empathy, more perspective, and more truth, not less. Thank you.
While Mr. Hints makes his way up, Kay Kennedy will be on deck.
Good afternoon, John Hints. I am a resident of Amarillo and I'm here to speak in favor of the library board as well. After seeing this on the agenda, I actually had never read Gender Queer, so I purchased it and read it and found it actually to be quite a fascinating book. You know, I am a part of the gay community, but non-binary issues are not something I'm as experienced with, although I have known, have friends that are non-binary. It's something that's kind of difficult to understand. And I thought reading her journey, sorry, their journey, was fascinating. And yes, there are parts of the book where they talk about intimate details in regards to anatomy, but it's, it's really just a small part of the book and it, I think, expresses what that person was really feeling and it, and even to put it in the adult section, I kind of questioned because it's written from a young person's perspective. They start writing the book at the early years and it's everything that they go through on their process there. So anyway, I support the, the board and I hope that you will leave the books there. And it's important to the LGBTQ community to have books that represent us in the library. Thank you.
Up next is Kay Kennedy and after her is Alyssa Perez.
Good afternoon. My name is Kay Kennedy. And typically, my extent of my involvement in politics is either a yard sign or a button, but this year I did have more concern. Through, through studying the League of Women Voters Guide and also websites, I have found that Mayor Stanley sees himself as the lead volunteer in establishing a vision for the city. Councilman Tips wants a city that represents all the citizens, not just one. Council Shirley wants every resident to have a voice. Council Simpson wants our city government to be one that listens. All these are good statements for those running for reelection. On the agenda today is the discussion of approval of a permanent chair for AEDC. Currently, Alex Fairley is acting chair. As a citizen, I'm faced with facts that I feel cast doubt on the effectiveness of his participation in the AEDC now and ongoing. Our Secretary of State has reported the last election cycle individual gifts. Mr. Farley gave more than $23 million. The mayor received at least $45,000 and most of you received donations. As the mayor, at the mayor's victory party, Mr. Fairley stated, he wanted to level the playing field. While Mr. Fairley has made many generous gifts to our community, including one in honor of his wife at the Amarillo Symphony for her 44 years of, of being a violinist with the symphony, and I applaud that one. But this much money in a local election raises questions. The sudden departure of an industry-wide, respected, and praised AED director and the resignation of all but one of the members of the board and the puzzled statements from professional economic developers in other places gives us pause to raise more questions. It's time for someone to say, that's not right, and so I'm here. I want to level the playing field with some of the 50-plus citizens that volunteered to help with the AEDC board. Our citizens have the right to engage in the shaping of the city and serve the, the city that serves them. The AEDC is a good place for that. I urge you to table any conversation with the AEDC board or chairman until the election, which is just 11 days. Remember, you wanted to represent all. You wanted to hear their voices. Listen. Thank you so much.
While Ms. Perez makes her way up, Allison Trumps is on deck.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Perez and I'm here to speak against Ms. Collier's appeal for reconsideration to ban the Everybody Book, Gender Queer, and the Bluest Eye. I'm a mother to a beautiful three-year-old boy, Axel, and we frequently visit the Amarillo Public Libraries. We have enjoyed countless activities and events there. We adore our librarians and support their decisions when it comes to these books for two main reasons. The act of deciding what media our children consume is up to parents and parents alone. And the Amarillo Public Libraries have already resolved this issue through a diligent process. Let's talk about the Everybody Book. Well, I read it last night and I can assure you this book is essential in discussions about consent with our children. Sometimes as a parent, I don't have the words to explain complex ideas like consent, autonomy, and respect. Literature is a gateway to having those hard conversations. These books are essential. The decision about what media a child consumes is entirely up to me as a parent and my family's morals and values. We as constituents should not be attempting to remove books that we individually as parents disagree with. Literature is a personal choice. I make that choice for my child, not Misty Collier, not this council, and not any government agency for that matter. Ms. Collier would have you believe that the library has been careless about the books in discussion today, but that could not be further from the truth. Upon the filing of this grievance about, about these books, a panel of five librarians researched and reviewed the contents of the grievance and the related book. They reported their findings to the Director of the Amarillo Public Library and the Assistant Director. These two individuals did their own research, considered the findings from the other librarians, and issued a decision. The filer of the grievance is still entitled to appeal this decision. The next step is this council. But I believe this is completely unnecessary as the library has already taken steps to satisfy Ms. Collier's grievance. Gender Queer has been reclassified in the adult section. The Bluest Eye is already in the adult section. This appeal is completely unnecessary and we cannot allow it to take away parents' choices regarding what literature is right for their family. It is for these reasons I humbly ask you to honor the decision made by the Amarillo Public Library and dismiss Ms. Collier's appeal. Thank you.
After Allison, Rudy Cannon is on deck.
Hello, my name is Allison and I am a fellow Amarillo, Amarillo resident. And I'm here today with my daughter Freya, speaking for the retention of the books. The attempt to erase any word that is true, whether that be truth by science or experience, is a repetitive, boring failure of man. I unfortunately understand how this is even up for discussion. What we don't know scares us. What we see happening in the rest of the country, we see how the world is responding. It is our duty as citizens of this town to ensure that we continue to protect and practice democracy. In eradicating literature, you or your loved ones can choose not to read as the antithesis of that democracy. I have faith in our processes and powers we have given to our library and how they choose to classify books. Thank you.
After Rudy, Teresa Burnett is on deck.
Hello, I'm Rudy Cannon and I've lived in Amarillo now about a year and a half. I've been to the public libraries, many of them. The books that are in question aren't on bottom shelves in the kids' section. They aren't colored to say, grab me, three-year-old, I see you and I need you to read me. They are there for the kids who need them. When I say kids, I mean the state of Texas, anyone under the age of 17. They are there for people who need them. Removing them does nothing but show a cowardice essentially, because cowardice is taking away the agency of others. It is what everyone here grew up, if they grew up in Texas, learning about from the Bible, either King James or any other facts. Taking away the right to choose to read something doesn't do anything but impose ignorance on people who do not wish to be ignorant. Taking away the right to understand your body is something that has been done in the past with examples like this book. This is a 1990 book instead of a 1970 book. This is a fourth edition. Without this book, gynecology wouldn't be where it is today. Without this book, people wouldn't realize that we all start off as the same clump of cells. It is up to a mutation to switch and change that. And sometimes, as we know, mutations change and vary. In doing that, you have different bodies. Bodies that do not look like the standard body. Unless you're in the medical field and have seen all the examples, you wouldn't know that. The next best thing is to look it up yourself, which is something you can do in the Everybody Books. The original Everybody Books are separate by gender. There is the girls' Everybody Book and the boys' Everybody Book. I know, I have a preteen and have given it to them. I've also taught this subject before. On top of that, in the Bluest Eyes, it doesn't just talk about rape and incest, it talks about racism. It talks about colorism. It talks about what it is like when you do not see beauty in yourself and the people that look like you. Without books that share and show that, you have people who do not realize that there are a multitude of different hues and people, and in every person there is beauty. Without these books being there, people do not have the ability to see themselves in this community. Thank you.
After Teresa, we'll have Anthony Cordova.
Hello, I'm going to speak on two points and I'm going to do it very quickly. The fact that-
The fact that the 8D is even called into question tells the library board that you do not trust them, and if that is the case, why are they still the library board? If you do trust them, then this should not even have come up. The other point I'm going to make is I know a 14-year-old who personally was on the verge of suicide, but when given gender queer, made their whole life better. Thank you.
If I may, Ms. City Secretary, real quick, as a statement of fact, just so we don't get too far, this is the appeal process, and so this is the way that this government is set up to work, and so you, as a citizen, have the opportunity to take it to a board that is nominated by those whom you have elected. So elected officials place your peers and other citizens on these boards. These boards sit for this reason, but just because there's a board placement does not mean that you, as a citizen, lose your full voice, and your full voice is being heard here. So this council is not calling in something for us to review. We have no intention of banning a book or doing anything. That's not even the request of the individual that put this forward. But what we are doing here today is we are saying that this is the correct way forward. We are choosing to do business in public rather than squashing something and keeping it off of the agenda. We are allowing business to be done here in front of you, and I know that by the end of this meeting, we will see common sense and logic prevail and policy. And so we are looking at this as a form of governance, understanding that this is the policy that we want. You want to have an appeal process that goes all the way to your council. Otherwise, you have those elected representatives that don't get to actually advocate for you when you happen to be on the wrong side of that potential outcome. So thank you, we'd move on to the next one.
Anthony Cordova, and then up next will be Edith Di Tomaso.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anthony Cordova, and I'm a student of political science at WT. I'm here to speak against Ms. Collier's appeal, and I will waste no time and get right to the heart of this matter, which is education. One need only look to the past to realize that the systematic decision to restrict literature, information, education, in any capacity is the first steps towards authoritarianism. Look to Ireland in the '20s, Germany in the '30s, and Russia in the '40s. It is no coincidence that these famous restrictions on literature coincided with some of the most volatile and dangerous political occupations in recent history. For a society to truly flourish, ideas ought to be regarded and understood and not feared and ignored. A strategy of banishment only ends with either side worse off. I do not speak hyperbolically when I say there is nothing to gain from politically overriding the educational process and everything to lose. If the proper channels have been established and followed, and the people have spoken, you must honor that. You must remember who you chose to serve. The world is and always will be much bigger than one can hope to contain, and I hope you here today will embrace that notion. Thank you very much.
After Edith, we'll have Sam Burnett.
Good afternoon, Councilman and Mr. Mayor. My name is Edith Di Tomaso. I reside at 1613 B Bowie Street in Amarillo, Texas. I am here today to speak about the recent actions by the library board to retain three books that a small group of patrons wished to have removed from circulation. Let me, I'm not going to talk about the books so much as some other things. Suppose that I don't like cilantro. I think cilantro tastes like soap, but I have invited any of you to come to my house and bring a dish. However, your dish contains cilantro, and I ask that you would please not bring that to my house. That's my right as a private citizen and as a homeowner to say, "What comes into my house?" What is not my right is to go down to Market Street or Walmart and tell them, "Because I don't like cilantro, you have to pull everything off of the shelf that contains cilantro." It doesn't work that way. The same thing with books. I'm a parent, a grandparent, and a great-grandparent, thank you. When my children were growing up, I had the right to tell them, "You can't read that book. You can't have that in my house." They're now all adults. I don't have that right anymore. So I wish that you would please consider that. And then one other thing. One of the books, I think it was on queer people, was probably listed as pornography. Let me tell you, pornography is anything that is published or put out to arouse sexual, rouse somebody sexually. Anatomically correct book of men and women is not pornography. It's used for teaching. So in closing, what I'd like to tell you is, and I'd like to leave a little caveat, if you open the Pandora's Box to book banning, you have now created an atmosphere where anybody can come to the library board and say, "I don't like that book because it's against my lifestyle." Ooh, excuse me. They don't have the right to do that. They have the right, if they don't like that book, they have the right to go and take your child and say, "No, you can't use that." But if you open that Pandora's Box, suppose somebody who is a Satanist comes to the library board and says, "I want every Christian book taken out of the library." They have the right to tell them that, but they don't have the right to tell everybody else what they can and cannot read. Thank you.
After Sam, we'll have Catherine Welch.
My name is Sam Burnett. I'm the president of Amarillo Area Transgender Advocacy Group. I'm also a citizen of Amarillo, Texas, and I'm also a transgender man. And what I can tell you is that, as hard as your job is some days, sitting here, listening to all the citizens, you get to go home and go to bed. When things like this happen, I can tell you that tonight, the ATAG phones will ring all night long of kids wanting to commit suicide. It happened when the school board brought it up. It happens every single time, because these kids panic, and they are afraid that you're going to take their only source of understanding themselves. And we will have to deal with parents of telling them where they can take their children safely to get help, because there will be kids tonight that will cut their arms, because Misty Collier finds herself so arrogant that she needs to take off the table. She wants to talk about saving the children, then let's save the children. Leave the children alone. I'm sick of standing in public and talking to grown people about attacking children with the basis that they are protecting children. You're right, we have policies in place. It is a public library. I don't know the last time y'all have been to the library, but I don't see like 57 little kids running through the aisles, just snatching up books without a parent present. I think we have way overstepped our bounds. I think I'm sick and tired of it. I don't go stand at your door, tell you what to read, tell you what to wear, tell you how to dress, or tell you how to pee. I'm tired of people doing it to me. Do you see me in public doing inappropriate things with children? No. This basis and this ideology that y'all are using as a political platform is disgusting. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of having the phone calls. I would like all of y'all's phone numbers. Maybe y'all can answer the parents' calls tonight when they're crying because their kids want to die. Because me and my wife sit up all night long, and I go to work tomorrow, after sitting up all night with parents or running around town trying to go talk to these children so that they don't harm themselves. And when we do lose a kid, that lives with me every single day, from the day they die all the way forward. I can tell you from the time I took over, every single child that has died in this town from hateful comments. Give them the resources they have and they need, because not everybody can afford a $40 or $50 book. That's what public libraries are for. Thank you for your time.
After Ms. Welch, we'll have C. Lloyd Brown.
My name is Kathy Welch. I am a citizen of Amarillo, and I'm here to support the movement of these books to a secure adult section of the library. I love it when I get to hear people so blatantly misstate the facts. Myself and my acquaintances, the ones I know, are not here to ban books. We want them moved to a secure section where only adults can choose them for their children. I personally checked out this very book about knee height very close to the reading bathtub, and I'm not going to digress on that at this time. But today's children are being molested, raped, and assaulted at higher rates than ever. This can be traced directly to the over-sexualization of our children. Sex crimes are being decriminalized around this nation. Many sex crimes here in Amarillo are not properly investigated or prosecuted. Our children are being groomed to be victims with this kind of over-sexualization. It's not okay. Adult men and women are often encouraged by literature like this, and I personally know of a case where an eight-year, where a book like this was used to explain to an eight-year-old victim that exploiting her body with her dad was acceptable. If you want your children to read these books, you can go get them in the adult section, and I will be praying for you and for the protection of your children as you're over-sexualizing them like this. Thank you.
After Mr. Brown, we will have Lindsay London.
Good afternoon, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Lloyd Brown, and I am a citizen of Amarillo, Texas. I'm here to address the concerns about the appearance of impropriety surrounding Mr. Fairley's actions around, as the chairman of the Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Fairley has made public political statements while acting in his official capacity, and he has contributed financially to Mayor Stanley and council members Sherlyn, Kraft, and Simpson. While these contributions are legal, they, combined with his public remarks, raise real questions about undue influence and lack of neutrality at the AEDC. More troubling, Mr. Fairley reportedly communicated with the Agricultural Commissioner Sid Miller to help remove $6 million in funding for the range that was being proposed in the Texas budget. That funding was worked with local, state representatives to help build Amarillo's economic future. Undermining them doesn't just hurt the range, it hurts our region's credibility and our ability to work with state leaders in the future. Additionally, Mr. Fairley violated the membership agreement that the AEDC is part of the range in its bylaws in Article 10.6B that says, "Doing any act with the intention of harming the corporation or any of its operations by the member, by a member, is banned." The AEDC is about, supposed to be about growing Amarillo's economy. It's not about playing politics or retaliating against organizations with different views. In Article 5 of the AEDC bylaws, it clearly prohibits directors from using their position to support or oppose political candidates or measures. Even if no rule has been technically broken, the public perception is clear. These actions do not reflect the impartial leadership Amarillo taxpayers deserve. I urge this council to take a hard look at what's happening at the AEDC, restore trust, remove Alex Fairley as interim chairman, and remove him from eligibility to serve going forward. This is about integrity, and each of you has run saying you have integrity. It's time to make sure the people that are entrusted with public economic development funds are putting Amarillo first, not their personal political agendas.
After Ms. London, we're going to have Shelley Lupo.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Lindsay London, and I live in Amarillo. I'm here to speak on Item 8D. All three books up for discussion matter, but I want to talk about the Everybody Book by Rachel Simon. This book has been on my family's shelf since it was published in 2020. We have read it again and again as my kids have grown. It has helped us have honest, clumsy, age-appropriate conversations about bodies, consent, kindness, boundaries, and how people of all kinds move through the world. Let me say this plainly. This book is not graphic. It's not explicit. It's not inappropriate. It's gentle, medically accurate, inclusive, and backed by experts. It's a book about truth, respect, and self-awareness. If folks have read it and still think it's dangerous, I would encourage them to read it again and work hard to truly listen and abandon the moral panic. It also includes LGBTQ+ people because they exist. Learning about queer communities and families doesn't confuse kids, it protects them. It builds empathy, acceptance, and safety. Queer kids seeing themselves reflected in a book can literally save a young person's life. There is nothing profane about showing young people that all bodies and lives are worth understanding and worthy of respect. I've worked as a nurse in sexual health. I've cared for young people in crisis, some who didn't know how to talk about what happened to them because they were never taught they had a right to their body or a voice that mattered. Not once, not ever, have I seen a young person harmed by a book, but I have seen them harmed by shame, silence, and adults too afraid to speak truth. So let's please stop pretending this is about protecting kids. It's about controlling others. It's about a small group trying to force their beliefs on everyone else and drag us back to a time when knowledge had to stay hidden. But this is a public library, not a church pulpit. You don't get to erase people just because their existence makes you uncomfortable or the knowledge makes you uncomfortable. This conversation is closely linked to the very long ones we had in the chamber last year, the end of which was the voters upholding their right to freedom in personal decision-making. If you don't want your child to read it, that's your right, but you do not get to dictate what the rest of us and our young people have access to. Libraries are for everyone. The library board did its job. That decision should stand. These books must stay so that diverse voices stay. Our young people deserve knowledge, representation, and the freedom to grow up whole and unashamed or to be able to find the tools to heal when they have been broken. Thank you.
After Shelby Lupo, we'll have Emma Fournier. Shelby? Okay, Emma, if you want to come up, we'll have Cheston Furrow after you.
Hi, I'm Emma Fournier, obviously. I've lived in Amarillo my whole life, basically. I have, some of my earliest memories are from the public library. I have absolutely loved and had the freedom to pick any book I would, I choose with my parents' guidance. My mother took us to the library weekly, and it has always been a great place to be. I do appreciate that the library board has looked over this and agreed that these should, well, reclassify gender queer, but then leave the other two where they were. I'm so sorry, I'm very nervous. Anyway, I understand that people are saying that they just want to restrict these to adults. I think that's kind of silly, because whenever you think about... I think that's kind of silly because whenever you think about the logistics of it at all, are we going to have to block off half the library to kids? Are we going to have to put up a wall or anything like that? And that, and putting a wall up to, to block these books from children kind of is a bit intimidating to not, to have parents worry to, if they want to walk over and get an adult book for themselves, can they not have their kids over there? I think that is, it's just ridiculous. I like how the libraries are separated now. It is very nice. The Southwest branch especially, I love how open it is and things, but if we had to put walls and things and mark it as eighteen plus, like, that's just silly. I've never come across a book that was inappropriate for me as a child in that, in any library in this town. I've always felt welcomed, and there are, my mother and father have always been there for me. But also, the librarians are diligent in making sure that kids are attended to by their guardians or parents, and I think it is ridiculous to try to separate this and to not allow kids access to a book about anatomy. That is silly. And queer people do exist. I am part of the LGBTQ community. I have four siblings under the age of eighteen. I have five siblings that are part of the LGBTQ community, and I have nine more siblings. I have nine siblings, but four of them are still under eighteen, and I think they are allowed to, should be allowed to go anywhere in the library. I'm so sorry, I didn't make that quite clear. But anyway, that's all. Thank you.
After Cheston Furrow, we will have Alan Feingold.
All right. My name is Cheston Furrow. I live north of the Tri-State Fairgrounds. I am speaking today on Item 9D, additional project to the Tri-State Fairgrounds. My family has lived in northeast Amarillo for three generations. I will always support any project that is intended to enhance northeast Amarillo. I would like to invite you, mayor, councilmembers, city manager, and other managers of the city to come visit northeast Amarillo. I doubt that any of you have ever visited northeast Amarillo because you would not allow it to get this bad. While I am aware of the limitations of my area of Amarillo, I also know that the maintenance of basic but yet core infrastructure of northeast Amarillo has been neglected. To be fair, the street division of the city came last week to fill some of the potholes on Grand Street east of the fairgrounds. But even this very small Band-Aid on a, this was a very small Band-Aid on a very large problem. I would like to ask you to personally drive Grand Street from I-40 to northeast 24th Street. Grand Street is the main roadway that serves the fairgrounds. Horse trailers and cattle trucks use Grand Street to enter these fairgrounds. Any additions to the fairgrounds are welcomed and supported, but surrounding infrastructure needs to be maintained and improved. Our gutters are filled with sands and weeds overgrow our streets. I travel internationally for my job. I have visited cities and countries all over our planet. I have seen well-run cities and poor-run cities. Amarillo has great potential, but recently I have been embarrassed by the condition of our city. I am proud to be from Amarillo, but I am not proud of Amarillo. As you vote on the said item, have you ever tried to understand the purpose of the Tri-State Fairgrounds? Its original purpose was to be the AEDC or the range of its day. Now, that was a hundred years ago. In its beginning, former city mayors and commissioners filled its boards to further the economic development of our area. Can you, as the city commission, help re-empower the Tri-State Commission to seek out economic grants and monies that would help economic vitality of northeast Amarillo? That organization was started by former mayors, one of which is the namesake of Ross Rogers Golf Course, and the other one of its neighbor, Thompson Park, which is E.O. Thomas, which would be, I would encourage you to read his Wikipedia page of what E.O. Thomas meant to Amarillo and the abilities of, and the accomplishments he accomplished for the city of Amarillo. But I would like to invite you personally to come visit northeast Amarillo. Please drive Grand Street and any other street you would like to in northeast Amarillo, and please do not forget us, those of us that live north of the tracks. Thank you.
As Mr. Feingold makes his way up, Misty Collier will be next.
I think Mr. Furrow's statements were well-taken and that you should do further consideration for the redevelopment of northeast Amarillo, and you will need to begin with infrastructure, especially that area that lies between southeast Third and northeast Eighth, otherwise known as Amarillo Boulevard. It is an area or region of the city that was long neglected because it was an industrial area, and it was believed that the industry there would take care of it. They didn't. Perhaps the most serious problem that actually exists in the lower-income areas of the city, especially in the northeast sector, is the condition of water pipes underground, which is something the public simply does not see. The most obvious part of it, or I should say, less obvious part of it, is the existence of old two-inch diameter water lines, which the city promised to replace a long time ago. Some of them have been, but almost eighty miles of that diameter still exist, and the city still has no plan that would require the replacement of all of those two-inch diameter water pipes in a timely fashion. At present, when the money seems to be available, the city does something about it, and when the money does not seem to be available, the city forgets it. The city needs to have a special election or the city council needs to have a bond issue specifically to replace all the old two-inch diameter water pipes and old four- and six-inch diameter pipes, which are deteriorated. This project probably would cost between forty and fifty million dollars, but it will cost a great deal more if it is continually postponed. In addition, the city may need an extra water tower over in the northwest section of the city, and this too should be considered, even though the cost might run as high as twenty million. If the city does these projects, you will be in a much better position for economic development in these old and slowly deteriorating parts of the city, especially in the northeast sector. Thank you very much.
After Misty, we will have Patricia Vigil.
I did ask to speak in regards to this item when it came up. Does that matter?
You go ahead and give us your three minutes here. We're going to try to direct this conversation towards policy. If we would like to, council could try to involve you at that point, but I wouldn't foresee it. So if you take advantage now.
Okay. Can you place the picture up that I gave you? I sent it to your email and to theirs. It's fine. You don't have to put the picture up. I'm going to talk about it anyways. The reason why I gave you the picture to post up is to make a point.
We'll start your clock over again, Ms. City Secretary. Misty, thank you for the photo. Let me confirm, the photo was out of which book, ma'am?
It is out of Gender Queer, which they did go ahead and move to the adult section. It took me over seven months to get it moved.
So I'm, on behalf of like everyone that's represented here today, some would find it incredibly distasteful. Some may actually feel like it's freeing and liberating. I'm sure we have people on both sides. I'm going to choose not to put the photo up. I did want to confirm that it was something that came out of the book and which one it was.
Yeah, I can tell you what page it is in the book.
Well, if you would like to describe in a appropriate fashion, we could allow that or you could just move forward with your three minutes.
The page is in Gender Queer. It's page one hundred and sixty-seven. It is two young gentlemen giving themselves oral sex, and it is oral sex, and it is show it, and it is in cartoon form for children.
Okay. Ms. Collier, please go ahead and start, and we'll run the three-minute clock.
When you read a book or watch a movie, your brain activates in the same areas involved in real experiences, like emotions, senses, and memories. These are called mirror neurons. They make you feel what the character feels and emotional parts of your brain. Originally, I asked that all representatives of this community be represented. I asked for a nonpartisan issue, that all these books be removed from the children's section into an adult section where the children were not able to go in there and just get them out themselves, that the adults could go in there and get the book and then show it to them, to their children if they chose to. We do have state laws that say that you cannot do certain things to certain children. I would say, in the depiction of this book, those are these certain things. I would also say that a grown adult can't do this with a child, or they will go to prison. With that being said, what I asked for was a nonpartisan issue. The library forced me to ban books. Then, they chose to keep this book originally for the children. Then I had to press the issue again to get it moved to the adult section. And for the child's book, it has sexual instruction for children. I'm sure there's some pictures in that book they wouldn't want to show in here either. With all that being said, I would like to go back to my nonpartisan issue. Please remove these books from the children and put them in a room marked eighteen and above. The reason why I'm asking for that is so that a child cannot just walk into the library, pick up this book, and look at it. I understand that people don't like what I'm asking for. I feel like part of the city is not being represented, and I would like for it to be represented. I do not believe that everyone agrees with this. I believe that a lot of people wouldn't agree with this. And the last thing, I had another agenda item, which was MUDS. And the reason why I don't like MUDS is because it gives state control over that area because you get the money from the state. So that's all I have to say, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Up next is Patricia Vigil, and after Patricia, we will have Madison Boyle.
I too asked to speak before MUDS and before the library, but that's not how you're doing it, and so I hope I can get this in three minutes. To begin with, I'm going to start basically telling you my life story, and I hope y'all can all last that long. Sorry, because I'm pretty old. In the third grade, the principal came over as a speaker, and every morning we had prayer. That morning, he, in a cracked-up voice, because he was in tears, said he was no longer allowed to do that. When I got home, I questioned my mother about it, and she said, "Honey, the law says you can't pray in school anymore." Our pastor said that what he had saw in the future was that spitwads would be replaced by guns, and young girls would become pregnant. Everyone laughed. That was so funny. Well, in high school, my second year, they brought all the kids together, and instead of telling us about sex separately, they wanted boys and girls together. That way, they could, they brought in Planned Parenthood, and Planned Parenthood wanted to break down the modesty between children, boys and girls, because they knew statistically that within three months, two of the girls in that classroom would come in for an abortion. That proved true. Not only did they come in for abortion, but one of them committed suicide later in life. She was my friend. Now, when Callabam happened, people quit laughing. It wasn't funny no more. Everything he had said came true. Now, we want to break down the modesty of our children, and let's let them see what sex is. Well, I can tell you, from a young, very young girl, at the age of four, I was raped, and I was raped by a forty-year-old man, and I was not interested in sex at all at the age of four. And we do not need to be teaching our children, we need, that sex is okay, and, and all that does is make it acceptable to society that pedophiles can harm our children. And I guarantee you, he was a pedophile. I was harmed, and I did not appreciate it, and I still don't appreciate it to this day. I do have a loving relationship with my husband. It did not affect that because I believe the Bible, and I read the Bible, and I believe that God gave us the responsibility of taking care of our children. And I believe that in the beginning, He told man to take dominion and to rule and reign. And when Christ left, He said for man to take dominion and rule and reign. I'm telling you, men and women, you need to rule and reign.
Up next is Madison Boyle. After Madison, we will have Laura Street.
A little short.
Ms. Madison, is that okay, or do we need to adjust that for you?
Just a little short.
Okay. I think we can make a modification here real quick.
Cool. Yeah, that's good. Thank you so much. My name is Madison Boyle, and I am here to speak on Agenda Items 8D and 10B. Amarillo's library system followed its established protocols. The Library Advisory Board, tasked with serving the public good, carefully reviewed the materials and made a thoughtful, informed decision. To override their work, not once, but twice, is to undermine the integrity of that process and send a troubling message. That public input only matters when it aligns with political convenience. Even more concerning, attempts to ban books target queer and diverse voices, voices that deserve to be seen, heard, and respected. Queer identities do not deserve to be erased just because they make someone else uncomfortable. Discomfort is not a justification for censorship. It is the beginning of a dialogue, not the end of representation. As a survivor of sexual abuse, I can tell you personally, children understanding what their body parts are called, what boundaries are, and what consent means isn't dangerous. It's life-saving. This knowledge is a critical part of preventing abuse and helping victims find their voice. Taking that away does not protect children. It silences them. Don't use the stories of victims as a tool to take their voices away and silence their lived experiences. And now, we're being asked to consider spending taxpayer dollars to build a separate room in our public libraries to house materials some find controversial. This is not only fiscally irresponsible, it's censorship in disguise. It sends the message that these books, these people, these stories are something to be hidden away. Public libraries exist to serve everyone, not to cater to the discomfort of a few at the expense of truth, safety, and inclusion. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for your time.
After Mrs. Street, we will have Hope McCoy.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Street, and I am a resident of Amarillo, Texas. Mayor and council members, I come before you as a citizen and as someone deeply involved in the work of The Range, an organization created to serve Amarillo and the Panhandle through collaboration and innovation. Recently, Mr. Alex Fairley, our AEDC Chair, made public statements that I've ignored his calls and missed meetings I was invited to. That is false. I've received no call, no email, no texts from Mr. Fairley. Instead, he challenges through intermediaries or public forums where there is no conversation. I've made myself available to discuss The Range and will continue to do so. To be clear, no one took money from the city or the AEDC. The AEDC made a strategic decision to help launch a nonprofit that could access billions in economic development funds. I worked for two years with AEDC and Dr. Matt Garner on research and a feasibility study confirming Amarillo's potential. This effort enhances the AEDC's mission. Completing my terms on the AEDC board, I was asked to take this forward. Jason Herrick was not involved in that decision. He joined later. When we needed to form the board, no one owns a nonprofit. It is governed by Board of Directors and accountable to the state of Texas. As controversy grew around this launch, I was disappointed as false accusations targeted The Range. But no longer is this just a city or AEDC issue. To be clear, the funds were used as intended, to create a separate nonprofit. Nothing was found criminal in this process. The Range is not a governmental entity. What is most alarming is that Mr. Fairley recently communicated with the Texas Agriculture Commissioner, which resulted in blocking six million dollars in appropriated funds for priorities, including water, workforce, and fire prevention. Projects that would benefit Amarillo farmers, Amarillo farmers, ranchers, and Panhandle families. That decision hurt real people. My question is, who will hold Alex Fairley accountable? Do we want a chair of our AEDC to be so financially and politically involved? Here in Amarillo, we work through disagreements with honest, constructive dialogue. We support, not attack, our nonprofits. Mr. Fairley clearly does not value that approach, and our community has lost trust. I respectfully urge the council to wait until after the election to consider carefully the appointments of the AEDC board and leadership. As I continue to say, I and The Range will work with any board you choose to appoint. Let's return to truth, collaboration, and service, please.
Thank you, ma'am. As a statement of fact... Thank you, ma'am. As a statement of fact, uh, you did receive a $750,000 wire transfer that has been confirmed.
Hello.
Ma'am, would you please state your name and if you reside in the city limits?
Yes, hello. I'm Hope McCoy, and I live out in Pleasant Valley, Amarillo, Texas. And this time, I'm gonna take my glasses off, because my daughters were like, "Mom, you should've taken your glasses off." So, here I am without my glasses. And I'm not here today to speak about anything on the agenda. This may not go over popularly, but this is my opinion and my right to say these things. I'm here to tell all of you guys, gentlemen, thank you. Sincerely, thank you for all the hours you have spent away from your families, all the countless hours you spend trying to solve city problems that we, the citizens, do not see the hours that, you know, you're spending away from your families and doing things you might like to do. You've been in office almost two years, and that's really not a whole lot of time to get accomplished, I know, all of your goals. But hopefully, you will be given more time after this election. But I wanna just really say thank you for, uh, the scrutiny you go under, the bashing, just all the rhetoric. We're not in your shoes, and I imagine they're pretty hard to be in right now. But what I would like to see is Tom's pedometer to see how many, uh, miles he walks daily throughout all our neighborhoods. And Tom, also wanna thank you for agreeing to come to our community meeting this coming Friday. We look forward to having you there. Uh, Mr. Kraft, thank you for your two years of serving, and we'll hate to see you go, but thank you for all the work you did for the policemen and the firemen to get them their raises, along with all of the rest of you. I wanna thank all of you for approving the playground equipment that we're gonna be getting at the Pleasant Valley Park, because it's much-needed after vandalism. And Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for, uh, talking about me on Kingdom Keys, inviting us, the Pleasant Valley people, to your table to discuss what more further we can do for our community, for infrastructure, because we're out there, and with losing our school, we need some help out there. So thank you for inviting us to your table. James Brown and I have been working with some of your other city departments already to help build up Pleasant Valley, so we're ready for when, um, new things come our way. So really, I'm just here to tell you thank you for all the time you spend working with us now, and we look forward to working with y'all in the future to help build up not just Pleasant Valley, but all of Amarillo. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Up next is Cassie Green, and after Ms. Green will be Derek Porterfield.
Hello, my name's Cassie Green. I'm a resident of Amarillo. And I did not even intend to talk about the books, but I'll probably save that towards the end of my speech. I'm gonna go ahead and read it for time's sake. I too wanna say thank you. It's part of it. "Good afternoon, Councilman and Mayor. It's exciting times for our city. I wanna let you guys know that however the vote goes, in the next couple of weeks, I do appreciate your efforts to solve current city problems. However, I have not agreed with most of your choices that seem to have smart city, smart city components. In a, in a attempt to alleviate some of my concerns, you've agreed to create an ordinance to protect the people's rights from this new implementation of cutting-edge technology and surveillance into our city structure. It's been since December that you agreed to create this ordinance, and still we see no ordinance. I wish you would take this ordinance as seriously as you do in pushing what seems to be another UN agenda item called the MUD. Mud, like walking and getting your foot stuck in mud. One of your opponents, Misty Collier, brought this to my attention on a News Channel Seven debate. I believe she called it a cookie-cutter globalist solution to a city problem. I would have to agree. After watching that debate, I quickly started doing research over the Easter weekend, which was just last weekend. I posted a video less than two days ago, about two days ago, and received an overwhelming response of concerned citizens. At least fifty-plus people contacted me, asking me, "What can we do about it? How can we find out more?" I don't feel like it's my responsibility to educate the people, the good citizens of Amarillo. I think this is being pushed too fast, since it was just barely first announced last council meeting. I would like to read just, well, I'm not gonna read that. So I would like to ask you for more time concerning your, um... I would like to ask you for more time. Basically, don't vote on it today, if you will. That's my request. Um, and it, I would like you guys to probably push it back, um, till we can get educated. Maybe have some town hall meetings or whatever. Um, Misty suggested in that same debate that we could have surveys, you know, and ask the people what they think about these things that y'all are pushing down the agenda. And, uh, I'd like to read chapter six of the Everybody book. This is a picture of a man and a man together, and it's called Sexual Intercourse. Why is it the first picture on the first page Sexual Intercourse? Why is it a man and a man? And I don't even think there's a woman and a man.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you speaking here today.
After Mr. Porterfield, we will have Eric Berg.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, appreciate you guys making time for us today. Uh, I'd like to begin with a passage from the Bible. It reads, "The next day, the older daughter said to the younger, 'Last night, I slept with my father. Let's get him to drink wine again tonight, and you go in, and you sleep with him, so we can preserve our family line through our father.' So they got their father to drink wine that night also, and the younger daughter went in and slept with him." Again, he was not aware of it when she lay down or when she got up. That's just a bit of Genesis nineteen. The story of Lot and his daughters. Now clever biblical scholars know that this is just an ideological myth. It's making a joke about the origins of the Moabites and the Ammonites, claiming that they were all inbred. And it's a funny joke, sure, uh, but it's taught in churches, from a book that is more widely available than any other, one around which many would like for us to shape our laws and our cultural morality. Now, we know that this isn't a conversation surrounding disturbing stories and their availability to children, not so long as the Bible is within their reach. Rather, this is about deciding which disturbing stories that we approve of and setting our metric around the wills of the disturbed. We are not banning violent stories. We are not banning heterosexual stories. We are talking about banning queer stories. Book banning has always been a tool of control and never one of safety. This is a discussion about government overreach in response to weak parenting. The Nazis banned books. The Soviet Union banned books. The Catholic Church even kept an official list of banned books for almost four hundred years. And in each case, the goal was to stop people from thinking critically and independently. We are not protecting kids by banning books. We are protecting scared parents from their own discomfort. But here's the thing. Parenting is supposed to be uncomfortable. It requires conversation, compassion, and curiosity. Books do not raise our kids. We do. The danger isn't in libraries. It's in our absence as parents. If you ban a book today because it mentions queerness, do not be surprised when someone bans your book tomorrow because it mentions God, or, I guess, because it talks about two daughters sleeping with their dad for an Israeli punchline about incest. This isn't about books. It's about fear, and fear has no place in the public library. Thank you for your time.
After Eric Berg, we'll have Steve Urban. Do we have Eric Berg? Okay, Steve Urban.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Steve Urban. I'm an emeritus professor of internal medicine at Texas Tech. I've been a resident of Amarillo for forty-three years. I'm gonna cut this short, because you've heard this many times before. I'm going to speak against the censorship of books, uh, at our public library. Um, I'll speak briefly about The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. And some people consider this book to be pornographic. It does depict, um, incest. It does depict sexual abuse of children. But anybody who would be titillated from this book is not normal. These scenes are horrific, okay? They are meant to tell the truth about childhood sexual abuse. When I was at Tech and active, I spoke several times at our Human Sex Trafficking Seminar, and many of the women that we were talking about there or that we were, uh, discussing had suffered childhood sexual abuse. I don't think the proper way to deal with this is to sweep it under the table and not to allow people to read about it, okay? We need to bring this out in the open. It's a terrible crime. I'm gonna skip over a little bit about the books, which were primarily chosen because they're LGBTQ-friendly. Um, I'm a straight man. Uh, I don't quite understand why gender dysphoria happens. But when I took care of patients like this in my practice, my goal was to treat them respectfully and try to treat everybody equally. So how does a librarian treat somebody with respect? They open the library to their ideas. They allow them to read things that would help them. That's the way you respect this community. People who are afraid that their children might go into the stacks of the library and see something that they would consider to be inappropriate, I would give one admonition to them. I would say, be a parent. Pay attention to where your children are in the library. Don't let them run around unsupervised in the library, no more than you would allow them to unsupervise, to have unsupervised view of the internet. My final point is that I think the library took a very reasonable and sensible approach to this. The library dealt with it just as they're supposed to. Five librarians read all of these books, front to back, and approved of them. It went to the library board. All of the board members, the Library Advisory Board, all board members read all the books from front to, to, to end. They, um, moved one book to the adult section, which I thought was very appropriate. So I would just remind you that this is a board that you nominated, and, uh, I'd like you to stand in solidarity with your professional librarians and with the members of this committee, and keep these books in the library. Thank you.
Mayor, that's everybody on the list.
Okay. Thank you to everyone who spoke here today. Um, it is four forty-eight. Uh, we're gonna take around a twelve-minute recess. We're gonna come back at five. We then will ask for anyone that would like to offer public comment. We'll continue with public comment at that time. We're gonna take a brief recess. Thank you. We will officially call ourselves back to order now. Ms. City Secretary said that we had one name that was signed up that we've skipped over inadvertently. We apologize. We're gonna come back to that name. And then, the way we'll do this is, we'll just do, uh, by hand raising. We'll start on the right. We'll go to the left, and we'll go row by row all the way to the back. And we'll be here as long as it takes. Ms. City Secretary, who do you have next?
Kevin Nelson.
Afternoon, sir. Thanks. My name is Kevin Nelson. I'm a resident of Amarillo. I'm here to speak on ten E. Um, you know, there were a lot of volunteers who worked on the Hottown Project. And, uh, of all those volunteers, I'm only aware of one that got paid, and it was Alex Fairley. The problem I have with the fact that Alex got paid is that he didn't disclose he was getting paid. So without getting into all the details, his firm essentially received a commission based on the amount of money the city spent on Hottown. The more money the city spent, the more money his firm made. Alex failed to disclose this arrangement, even as he attempted to get the city to increase the Hottown budget from forty-five million to sixty million. I mention this story because Alex is once again volunteering his time in a very public way. He's now the chairman of the AEDC, and the stakes are substantially higher than they were with Hottown. Alex played a significant financial role in getting all of you guys elected to the city council. He's now playing an even bigger financial role in getting Cole and Tom re-elected. In fact, he's spending more trying to get Tom and Cole re-elected than most people make in Amarillo in a year, and more than some people in Amarillo make in a decade. This all looks like pay-to-play. Alex pays each of you. You put Alex in charge of the AEDC. Alex politicizes and weaponizes the AEDC in order to get Tom and Cole re-elected. In addition to the obvious pay-to-play optics problem this creates, the AEDC's newly enacted bylaws specifically prohibit this type of activity. All of this is very bad. It is not, however, why I'm here today demanding that you immediately remove Alex Fairley from the AEDC. I'm here today demanding that you immediately remove Alex Fairley from the AEDC, because as the chairman of the AEDC but without authority to act, Alex inserted himself into the legislative appropriations process and prevented Amarillo from receiving millions of dollars this legislative session. session. He publicly bragged about the conversations he had with Sid Miller and Dan Patrick and about how after those conversations Amarillo won't be getting the millions of dollars that had been designated to come our way. This does real damage to real people in our community. Alex did this as the chairman of the AEDC, but he failed to have a public meeting about it, failed to talk to the other AEDC board members about it, and failed to get this council's approval for it. He decided in his own head and without talking to you, without talking to the other AEDC board members, and without talking to representatives of the range, and without a public meeting, that Amarillo didn't need those millions of dollars. So Alex acted on your behalf, on the AEDC's behalf, on the range's behalf, and on our community's behalf to prevent those millions of dollars from coming to Amarillo. This behavior is absolutely, undeniably, and clearly wrong and unacceptable. This is why you must remove Alex Fairley from the AEDC immediately. Anything else will perpetuate the view that this council has a pay-to-play system, and Alex has paid you so much you're going to let him play by whatever rules he wants to play by. Do the right thing. Remove Alex Fairley from the AEDC today. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Nelson, as a statement of fact, as you're walking out, I did not receive any money from Alex Fairley. You said we all received money. I have not received anything. So just as a statement of fact.
Ms. City Secretary, does that take care of everyone on your list?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would ask, do I have anyone here on the right side that would like to offer public comment? Mr. Ford, you're on the front row if you come forward. Yes, sir. You can just hand it to Mr. Kraft.
Very bad. Wait, wait. Don't start the clock just yet. Just want to make sure they have it in front of them. Thank you. I'm sorry? Can I? I'm, can I speak? Okay. My name is Mike Ford, resident of Amarillo, and it's great to hear in this room people talking about AEDC bylaws. That's the most I've heard the folks who are in favor of the AEDC talk about bylaws in the last 15 years. And it's amazing. What you have in front of you, which I've given you, is called 14 Strikes, the 14 steps that were never taken. In order to create what they created and say that they created it legally, they had to have taken these 14 steps. 14 different meetings, publicly noticed, publicly held, and voted on, public votes that would create a legal basis for doing what they did. That does not exist. And I will tell you that on the basis of 14 Public Information Act requests. I've done 14 open records requests, and I can guarantee you those records don't exist. This is a complete unlawful, illegal, I don't want to care, I don't know what you call it, but let's talk about Mr. Path. If I wanted to, if the city wanted to create a bank account, private bank account, and transfer money into it and do that without city council approval, would that be lawful or okay? Or unlawful? Yeah, I'm just asking a question. I think it would be unlawful, right? I think we could all agree it would be unlawful. Someone in the city decided to do that. There was never a vote, never a discussion, never a public notice to create a private bank account to transfer $750,000 into that bank account or to give private individuals control over the monies that went into that bank account. The Amarillo Global Food Hub had to be designated per state law as a project for a type A EDC. Every single project has to be designated and approved by the city council for a type A EDC. None of those things occurred. You don't see the Amarillo Global Food Hub mentioned, the range mentioned, in any public notice, in any meeting minutes, anywhere. Laura Street can talk about, we talked about this stuff all the time. That's great. It was never in a publicly noticed meeting. Doesn't appear in any minutes, and it doesn't appear in any vote, doesn't appear in any official act by the city of Amarillo or the AEDC. The $750,000, we're going to take a line item, $100,000 line item, we're going to increase it by 150%, and then we're going to triple it. Imagine doing that with the fire, the new fire equipment we're getting, firefighting equipment we're getting, right? The city council has authorized a certain amount for that, correct? Yes. Right? And so let's imagine that the city staff just takes it upon themselves, oh, we've got some better equipment in mind, so we're going to increase the authorized amount by 150%, and then we're going to triple that. And then we're just going to write it to a private account that's been established to receive public monies with no approval by anybody. All illegal. All absolutely illegal. And for us to sit here, we have the news over here, we used to have news agencies in this town, and 1961 won the Pulitzer Prize for reporting on public corruption. And now we just got people just throwing softballs, doing nothing. Okay, I want, you have now, and I'm going to pass out to the press before I leave, you have the questions. Show me the meeting where you agreed to create a private bank account. Show me the meeting where you agreed to pay $750,000 to the range. There's 12 other things on here that don't exist that you can handle Lloyd Brown, Laura Street, Kevin Nelson, anybody else who wants to defend them, and say, where is this record? Because it doesn't exist. 14 strikes. That's why nobody contributes to this organization.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Appreciate you being here. Do I have anyone else here on the front row that would like to offer public comment? We're going to go row by row. Here on the left, Mr. Fisher, you're up.
Mike Fisher, I live in the city limits of Amarillo. Boy, Kevin Nelson has got some nerve. And then he leaves. I mean, he's just a coward. I mean, he comes up here and throws his darts and leaves. While his wife was on the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation on the board, while she was on the board, her husband and a group of friends bought a building, the one that said WT is downtown. They paid, I think, close to a million bucks for it. Then in less than a year, they sold it for $2 million. You want to talk about somebody make, pocketed money. They personally pocketed. So whatever Alex Fairley is doing for you guys or trying to get you back in office, I don't hear anybody saying you're pocketing any money. These guys, that's just one deal. I'm just bringing up one because I have more important things to talk about here. I'd like to speak today not just about policy but about character, because I believe Amarillo voters deserve honesty, not marketing slogans. Just this morning, I received a political text from Councilman Les Simpson, proudly declaring he brings steady, quote, "steady conservative leadership and has led with integrity", quote. That might sound good in a campaign message, but his recent behavior tells an entire different story. Let's talk about the latest flyer, the one you just sent out yesterday, the week that early voting starts. It reads, "David Prescott is the only city council candidate that's supported by Les Simpson. He is not backing Tom Sherlin." Let's, so I guess he doesn't support either of you guys either, except Josh, you're on your way out, so you're good. I guess you guys are bros. Let's unpack that. First, Les Simpson, after serving on this council with Tom Sherlin for two years, publicly disowned him in print. He didn't stop there. He failed to endorse any of his fellow incumbents, not the mayor, not the councilman, Don Tips, who's running unopposed. What message does that send? And remember, for the past two months, PAC has been sending out mailers with Les Simpson's photo printed alongside other candidates implying a slate of unified team. Not once did Simpson correct or reject the narrative. Instead, he waited until the week of nearly, of early voting to suddenly flip the script and claim he stands alone. It wasn't about principle, it's about timing. Now contrast that with the man he's thrown under the bus, Councilman Tom Sherlin. Mr. Sherlin is the only member of this council who doesn't hold another job or company that he runs. He's retired after working his way up from the bottom to CEO of a local company, and now he gives his full time. Instead of fishing, he's giving himself up, and you're throwing him under the bus. Mr. Simpson, that is, you're not a conservative. You're not, I question the man you say you're a man of faith. A Texan doesn't throw another person under the bus, and I question you being manly also because you wouldn't do this to that man.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Skank, you're next, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's been interesting. I've watched many campaigns through this city dating way back, I mean, to the 80s. Something unusual happened I want to speak about first. Miss Street, Laura Street calls a press conference. Okay, some of us show up over there. You know, I get blocked on Facebook by some liberals and some communists, but I've never been blocked from a press conference that I've known. She was blocking anybody. And if anybody follows me, they know I'm sort of a little citizen journalist reporter because I like to report on what's going on and let people read it, and I have quite a few, so. But anyway, there's amazing campaign issues I've never seen before. Many campaigns have had a lot of mudslinging. Integrity has taken a backseat lately. PAC ads are a big disappointment to me. You know, some of them have gotten overboard. When you have things that come out like this that turn people that are sitting by each other, working together through the last year and a half, and, you know, what makes this campaign different is the factions, because there's two different factions right there. You've got a faction of Amarillo Matters, Prescott, Laura. Amarillo realizes they can't battle you guys on, you realize you can't battle these guys on the merits because you're just having to jump on them for anything, throw out stuff that just is the most ridiculous things I've ever seen. And you've tag teamed Les off of what these guys have done with success too. You're just sort of, okay, I like that. Oh, I don't like that. It's going to be 4-1 or whatever. They're just storing them major misleading statements. But voting days are here. Let's get out. Let's get to voting. This late coming mailer, you know, it's interesting that you didn't, you should have announced that early that you were that way, that you weren't wanting to do that. That would have let things, you know, in here, and then another one, you said you have no group. Yeah, you do. That's your group. That and Herrick, probably Miller, for sure Prescott, maybe Don. So my closing statement is just going to be, oop, one minute, one second. We need Reed, we need Tip, we need Cole Stanley, we need Tom Sherlin, and we need Leaf Kirsten.
Still working on the front row over here, anyone? Okay. Mr. Adair.
I'll try and make this quick since now I've got two topics I need to talk on. And a lot of people did leave. What I was going, I had something for Laura Street, because you can ask Tom and Josh. I show up to meetings, I record. Most of the time, I don't ask no questions. I sit, I record, I post a meeting. You can ask Amanda and John here. I show up, record meetings. And the other day, I wasn't able to attend Alex Fairley's event. I was sick that night. Fisher showed up and recorded it. The other day, I tried to show up to Laura's event, and one of her goons smashed my foot in the gate and told me that I wasn't allowed. So not at all transparent. And that video is up on Facebook, on johnadairrl for anyone to go check out. After that, I did get the chance to ask Matt Garner a couple of questions, and Matt Garner told me that I didn't seem to know what I was talking about because I hadn't read the document. If the document is out there that says that $750,000 transfer was legal and was approved, please show it to me because I will probably change sides. I will admit my wrongs and change sides. Secondly, on the books. Larry Flynt and Hugh Hefner were probably two of the biggest perverts and pornographers of all time, but they had the sense to put their product in a sleeve that was blacked out because they knew their product wasn't for children. This kind of common sense hasn't seemed to make it into our public library. This is not about banning books. When I came on to this, our original ask was for a separate room restricted to 18 and up, and that was never presented by library staff to the board members. Going forward, I would like to see this council look at some policies that would give better guidance to library staff, and if a separate room for that type of material could be put into policies somehow or another, I think that would be a great thing. But this is not about book banning. This is about protecting children, any five or nine-year-old, from just walking over, grabbing a book, and having a look. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else here on the front row to my left that would like to offer public comment? Okay? I'm going to go back over here so I don't lose my track. Second row, right side, raise your hand if you'd like to offer public comment. Mr. Miller, please come forward. Patrick.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council member, city staff. Grateful to stand before you and talk about item 10E. You know, audits are necessary, and oversight is absolutely essential for good governance. And I certainly applaud you all for being able to sit behind the dais and do the work you do. That is something that is extremely arduous. It takes a lot of time and effort to make sure that you're doing it right. You have to listen to a lot of voices, and you have to make the right decisions that you feel consciously are going to move our city forward. So I ask you, in item 10E, as you are possibly considering the permanent appointment of board members to the AEDC, that you would exert pause, that you would take the time to thoughtfully deliberate this, as you have for several months now, because right now we are in the midst of early voting. And on May 3rd, all Amarillo citizens will have an opportunity to really inform you as to the direction of the city. Rather than force your will against the voter, allow the voters to influence your decisions. This has been a problem ongoing for many years throughout our city, and unfortunately, we've had bad results when we don't take the time to be patient enough to allow the voters to inform our decision-making. Yes, this is a republic, and as a republic, you are the representatives who have to act on our behalf. But after several months of waiting to appoint a board, why the rush? But after several months of waiting to appoint a board, why the rush? Why the rush? Let's allow there to be proper time to allow the citizens to continue to exercise good judgment, to make fully informed decisions when they go cast their votes, so that you are better equipped with knowing exactly the direction that they want you to go when this city council convenes again on May 13th. This is a real opportunity of leadership, a test of that leadership. And despite all the things that are going on out there, let it be clear, as the great Abraham Lincoln said, "With malice toward none, with charity for all; with firmness in the right, as God gives us to see the right." Please act in accordance with the will of the people. You have thoughtfully deliberated this up to this point in time. I ask you, dear sirs, to please take the proper caution requisite for a great decision to be made for the betterment of all 203,000 citizens of Amarillo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else on the second row that'd like to offer public comment? We'll move to our left, second row. Okay, we'll catch you right over here, ma'am. If you don't mind giving us your name and if you reside in the city limits, please.
I'm Missy Bowman. I am a citizen of Amarillo. I've lived here my whole life. I was born here.
Thank you, grab that microphone, please.
I am a fourth-generation descendant of Amarillo natives. I come before you today to talk about the host, the library book issue at hand. And I have one question for the city council and Mr. Mayor. What will it take for you to see us as human beings equal to you in every way, even though our sexuality is different? Sexuality is a spectrum. We all land on it somewhere. Just because you are straight and just because we are gay, it does not give you the right to change policies to fit your way of life and erase ours. We have been here for all of human history, and we will be here for all of human future. We will always be walking beside you, behind you, in front of you, no matter what you do to try to erase us. We are your mothers, your fathers, your sisters, your brothers. We are your friends, we are your neighbors, and we deserve to be seen as much as you. As the Bible states, "Love thy neighbor." Attempting to erase our way of life is not loving thy neighbor. It is putting hatred in your heart. It is allowing that hatred to take stem within you, and it allows you to use your hatred to the devil's advantage. Admittedly, I am a pagan, but I was, I did grow up Southern Baptist Christian. I have read scripture front to back multiple times. I have been baptized three separate times in my life, including once after I came out as a pagan, because I recognize that each religion has its own benefits, as does each sexuality. I encourage you all today to see us, not just look at us, not just hear our words and put it in the back of your head and forget about it. I urge you to see us, to hear us, and to not remove these books. Keep them where they are, as they, as they are an important educational tool, not just today, but for anyone in the future who wants to learn a different way of life and see things from other people's perspective. Now I would like to take the rest of my time to have a moment of silence for all of the LGBTQ people who will lose their lives either by suicide or by another person's hand in Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. I'm gonna come back this way, I've got Mr. Allercon raising his hand. And then we'll move back to row three, we'll come across.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to speak in support of the decision of you guys moving forward.
Sir, I'm really sorry, real quick, can we get your name?
Yes, my name is Joe Allercon. I am a resident here in Amarillo. Thank you, sorry about that. I'm here to speak in support of you guys making the decision to move forward to appoint board members to the AEDC. As a citizen of Amarillo, Mr. Miller, you do not speak on behalf of me. I'm one of over 200,000, and I can tell you that there's a lot of frustration in, with the people of Amarillo that this has not taken place. There are many board members that, or new council, because with the elections that take place every two years, they too have to deal with the board that is currently in place. The reality is, it is time to move forward with business. There's a lot of things that the AEDC needs to accomplish. If the goal is for the AEDC to start moving forward, then it's about time that the common courtesy be put aside, and let's go back to best practices, and let's move forward with the appointment of board members that can get back to doing their job. The AEDC board has nothing to do with your election. The AEDC board, their responsibility is to move forward with what they have been tasked to do. There's gonna be a lot of learning curves that's gonna be taking place. We gotta get these peoples, or we have to get these individuals in their seats, so that way that they can start the learning process. To continue to delay and delay and delay only delays the process of the AEDC being able to get back on track. And so I thank you guys for being strong and being bold. And there's a lot of people that I can tell you that are in full support of this board, of this council right here placing board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allercon. We're gonna step back to row three. Do I have anyone here who would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, we'll jump across, anyone on that row that would like to offer public comment? We're gonna come back to row four. Anyone on row four on my right side that would like to offer public comment? Okay, we're gonna come across over here to the left side, anyone back there that would like to offer public comment? We're doing really good. Let's go back to row five. Anyone back here on the right-hand side will come across. I believe that's where Sam is seated. Anyone on that row that would like to offer public comment? Okay, we're gonna come back to the right-hand side. Yes, ma'am, if you please come forward. Afternoon, Ms. Adair.
Kristi Adair. Um, let me breathe for a minute. It's simple. People cannot drive a car until they're 16. People cannot go into an NC-17 movie until, of course, they're 17. They, they cannot drink until they're 21. Not, not long ago, they just upped that age for smoking from 18 to 21. So that should tell you the mentality level of every generation that's coming after me. And there has to be restrictions. I am not coming to you to tell you gay, lesbian, or black, white. I'm coming to tell you that these are children, whether they are gay, trans, lesbian, black, white, Mexican, it does not matter. These are children, and they need to be protected as long as we can protect them. And I have also been on the side of putting a separate room. If you can't put a separate room, no child in the library under the age of 16. If you cannot drive yourself to that library, then, there you go. You, you will have to have a parent drive you to that library. Put a sign on the public library that says, "Hey, moms, dads, watch your kids in here, because we've got some bad shit up in here." Oh, sorry. I apologize. But there are things that we can do as a community to compromise on this. I am not asking to ban books. I have never asked to ban books. They can do what they want to do with who they want to do it. I don't care. I'm just trying to protect people from a certain age down. And, you know, if you can show me a Christian book that shows a picture of Jesus with his daughter having sexual relations or whatever, bring it here. Oh, oh.
Turn around, you're addressing that.
Oh, so, well, I can address who I want to, it's council. Don't respond to me, then. Anyway, so, people who are up here, who are men speaking for women, women who don't even have kids, they don't know how to protect kids. They can't protect kids, because that's why they don't got any of their own. Okay? I'm coming up here to protect kids. Hush your mouth, it's my three minutes, not yours, babe. So, I'm coming up here to protect kids. And that's all I'm asking this council to do, is compromise and come up with a solution to where we can protect our kids, to where my five-year-old grandson is not running down the aisle and going, "Oh my God, Mom, what is he doing to that little boy?" It's picture books. They can't even read at the age of five. I think we should take all picture books out that have that, that are directed towards those small children. If you can't read them, you don't need to see them. Point blank. As far as the mud thing, I would, I would like to have more time to go over it and to look over it, just from my personal opinion. I am in agreeance to technology. I just think that it should be picked and choose what can help the citizens in Amarillo versus what can't. So, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Adair, we appreciate you. We'll go right next to her, Ms. Bonnie. I'll ask that you guys continue to respect each other and allow everyone to speak, and then to maintain your own opinion. Ms. Bonnie?
Hi. I'm Bonnie Seacrest, and I live in Potter County. I just had a couple of things I wanted to bring up, if we have them, address them in another meeting or whatever. The mud, I, I myself wanna know a little bit more about that to be comfortable with it. I did do a little reading on it, and one of my questions was how it would affect taxes, because we're struggling out there already. Also, I wanted to bring up, and this is the second time I came across this, and I want to thank y'all for making these public meetings to where we can come and be heard. I really appreciate that. Sorry, I'm nervous too. But I came across where the Amarillo City Council approved 3.75 million worth of incentives for a plant that could create 750 jobs, and it was out off Folsom. I wanted to see if, what happened with that? If it's still in plans, if it got accepted and then thrown out? I was just curious about that. Because whenever I go down and click on the company that they gave the 10-year tax abate agreement to, it goes to a broken link. So, I just kinda wanted to know a little bit more about that. My last thing on my list.
Ma'am, just real quick, on that business, do you have a name?
I'm trying. Thank you. I'm new at this. It says Southwest 003 Distribution Longistics LLC. And they started off with 100% tax abate, and it, and it goes up 10% every year. But I click on this link, and it's a broken link, so I was just curious.
Ms. Bonnie, we'll get you with Mr. Freeman right here. I bet you he can have you an answer before you leave today.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing, which is really important to me, I was watching some of y'all's previous councils where y'all were talking about the speeding that goes on here. I've been caught in the middle lane, you know, with, with two people speeding past me. It was me taking that extra step to look in my rearview mirror to see that car coming. I had a car full of kids. It was really piercing to my heart to hear that it was too expensive to do it more than once or twice a year, considering that we spend millions catching seat belts. People make a choice not to wear a seatbelt. People don't make a choice to get hit by somebody speeding. And that end, our dark roads, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnie. Appreciate the comment. Right over here, off to the far, my far right, yes, ma'am, if you come forward, give us your name and if you reside in the city, please.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Lockhart, and I originally came today to be a part of y'all acknowledging that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so thank y'all for that. A wise woman once said, "Speak your mind even if your voice shakes." And as I sat here today, I had to speak up. And this is something that, as a lot of people have acknowledged, I know that there are so many responsibilities that get put on y'all on, on that side of the dais. And also, sorry, I'm nervous, but I am an Amarillo resident, and I do want to speak on the line items regarding the library books. But one of the things that you mentioned earlier, Mayor Stanley, was that, you know, that today we're really wanting to look at policy. And I know tensions and emotions are a little high today, and probably will continue to be in the future, but there are a couple of things I want to address in regards to, to that policy. I am under that understanding that we are not about completely banning the books, but about, hey, can we put them in another location? And as another speaker brought up, there already are some policies and laws in place regarding ages. And my thoughts are, if in the state of Texas, if we can trust an individual that is of the age of 16 to drive a vehicle, then we probably should be able to trust them in looking at educational books regards to sexuality, even at age 17. You know, they can go to adult jail, but yet we're not gonna trust them to do... And how often I see even adults look, say things online all the time of, "Well, I did the research and did..." Well, how are we going to encourage people to do their own research and find out how their own views are if we don't give them those materials to do those things? Even in the state of Texas, and I am not saying that I agree with this, please hear me say this, but in the state of Texas, a 14-year-old can technically, is of age of having sex with someone in their age group. It's, it's under the Romeo and Juliet law. I am someone who, I work with children. I am not advocating that 14-year-olds should be out having sex. However, those are the policies, those are the laws that we have in place in our state right now. And I would, I think it would be beneficial for our public libraries to be able to have some of that information for those youth. And lastly, I understand that there is the process, and I'm glad that we have these processes in place to where we can appeal, and people like myself can walk up and, and share their thoughts and views on something. But I also know, when I was younger, I used to think as librarians as retired grumpy teachers, right, that just went around telling kids like, you know, "Shh, be quiet," right? But my sister-in-law, she in fact is a librarian, and so I learned that, no, you actually have to have your master's degree to become a librarian. And so I want that group that made that decision, that did that further research on these materials to be acknowledged for their expertise. They're not grumpy old librarian, retired teachers. These are educated people in this very specific field. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna come across to my left, yes, sir, in the back, if you come forward with your name and if you reside in the city limits, sir.
My name is Joe West, and I live in Amarillo City Limits for the last 15 years. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members for upholding the appeals process, even when some abuse it to push discriminatory agendas. Books are mirrors and windows. They reflect our lives and broaden our understanding. Censoring LGBTQ+ stories doesn't protect anyone. It erases real people and tells marginalized youth they don't belong. This isn't about parental rights, it's about imposing one's belief on everyone else. Public libraries exist to serve all citizens, not to cater to censorship. If we start censoring books today, whose voices will disappear tomorrow? History books? Science texts? Religious perspectives you disagree with? And let's be honest, this isn't a good-faith crisis, this is a manufactured crisis. Those abusing the appeals process to target LGBTQ+ content are wasting... Those abusing the appeals process to target LGBTQ+ content are wasting city resources, time, and taxpayer dollars. There should be consequences for weaponizing bureaucracy to push bigotry. Frivolous complaints hurt everyone, except the ideologues who don't care who pays the price. Worse, catering to ideologues like this drives away talent. Young people, educators, and businesses notice when a ci- when a city becomes hostile to inclusivity and diversity. They leave. Brain drain isn't an accident, it's the direct result of exclusion. Do we want Amarillo to grow or do we want to shrink further into irrelevance? We are better than this. Reject the censorship, stop the waste, protect all families, even the ones that don't look like yours. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else on this left-hand side, my left-hand side, that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'll come back over here. Any other, yes ma'am, if you come forward.
Hi, Rudy Cannon, I already spoke. Earlier, it's fine.
Can we reset that clock, ma'am? So you gave public comment already, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, well, we try to limit everyone to three minutes, that way we don't go for round two.
Right.
Um, are you speaking on the same topic?
Kinda, I'm speaking after Molly Collier came up and spoke in the middle...
Misty? Yeah, so this is, this is probably the exact forum, or this, the exact example of what this forum is not for. So to dissuade any, like, public rebuttals and getting into this back and forth, um, I'm gonna ask that I would offer my time to you after this meeting, or perhaps at another date, you can, you could address me to work on any issue, but I'd ask you not to offer public comment for the second time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
But that would be on 10B, correct?
Well, no, we, we give public comment to each commenter, you can speak on anything that has a matter pertaining to the city. You don't even have to speak on the actual agenda item. But what we wanna refrain from would be maybe the next person getting up to rebut what you just said for the second time, and then that disrupts the business meeting of us ever getting to the business that we still have to tend to.
Does the city, do, they do have moments where the citizens will be able to speak, especially if it is on a topic that someone brought up and changed and then spoke about?
It depends, it depends on subject matter experts, so there are times that we do call people forward. Um, today, we don't have any of those noticed necessarily, so, um, what I would ask though is if you would get with me, we'll take another recess here, uh, momentarily in a little bit. I'll be glad to give you my time.
Perfect.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. Do I have anyone else back here that would like to offer public comment? Yes, sir, if you come forward.
I'm Benjamin Cross.
Would you, would you mind repeating that?
I'm Benjamin Cross.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I'm a citizen of Amarillo. Regarding the Library Advisory Board's decision, I believe the board did its job and the council should decide against this appeal. We're here because people who cover their ears to maintain their ignorance have once again conflated difference with danger and demanded that we keep children as ignorant as they are in order to protect them. But knowledge is power and hiding knowledge from children under the guise of protecting them does the opposite. Moving books on difficult topics out of reach of children, which isn't materially different from censorship, is a great idea if you wanna make children susceptible to grooming. If you wanna groom a child, start by isolating them from alternative perspectives. Deprive them of the vocabulary needed to express their mistreatment. Deprive them of the words needed to describe their anatomy. Deprive them of the knowledge of abuse altogether. Gender Queer is a book about different perspectives. The Everybody Book is an anatomy book. The Bluest Eye is a book about abuse. You wanna protect children, these are exactly the kind of ideas you should be actively engaging with, and the alternative is leaving a curious child's mind to strangers on the Transparently, this is about, this is not about protecting children, it is about suppressing black and queer voices, as we have moments ago heard. Why are there two men depicted in the sexual intercourse section? Because men have sex. They can get married. The Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution guarantees a right against sexual discrimination. In my last minute, I wanna say, I've heard some people say some things in here, call people cowards, say they're unmanly. You've got this here, "Any person making disparaging and slanderous remarks will shall become boisterous while addressing the city council, or any person who shall refuse to abide by the orders of the presiding officer of the city council shall forthwith be barred from further audience before the city council." Do you take that seriously, sir? I mean, it's, it's kind of disgraceful to see these people say things, turn their backs on you guys, and you don't even say anything about it. I, I wish you would call a point of order, uh, but I cede the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else back here who has not offered public comment that would like to? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Lucas Gray. Amarillo resident? This is a layup, right? What, what do we really hear about as far as these books go? Uh, I feel like these are three, some, three of some of the most banal books somebody could've picked through, right? What's his name, uh, H.P. Lovecraft, right, is responsible for a poem called "The Creation of the Nigger," right? Like, that's pretty incinerary and to the point, right? Um, knowledge should never be banned, not even a little bit. This is coming from somebody whose people weren't allowed to read or, or curate knowledge for a very long time. And so I, I would never feel that knowledge should be kept from anybody in any capacity. If it's not for me, then it's just not for me, and not everything is made for me. And so if something is not for you, then it's just not for you. That's the bottom line. And I think we should all remember that. Again, this is, this is easy. I've said it before, but, you know, the tools you use to silence somebody today will be the tools they silence you tomorrow. This is a layup. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Okay, I believe we have successfully allowed everyone in the audience to speak. Um, I would like to say one other thing. Man, I am very, very thankful. I'm thankful for the opportunity for every one of you, uh, even if you chose words that I don't choose, even if you don't, esteem yourself to the same level of respect that I have for you. Um, I respect each and every one of you in here, and I know you don't agree with me. And I go out into public and I sit down and I eat my meal with my wife, and I take those looks that you think a guy like me doesn't take. Oh, I assure you, I do. I assure you, I know what it's like to be different. I know what it's like to be looked down on, to be judged, and to be treated in a way that's not respectful. So you come into our chamber, you will be respected. We are gonna respect you because you have value, every person in here, whether I agree with you or disagree with you. I respect you. In here, respect is currency, and we show that to you when we spend our time. Nothing is more valuable in this lifetime than our time, and we are choosing to spend our time on you. And so this council made a choice two years ago. We're not gonna go back the way we were. We took the velvet ropes down. We said, "You can speak on any topic." Do you realize how easy it would've been to take those reins that were existing, that had a muzzle over your mouth and wouldn't let you speak? Wouldn't let you hear anything? Wouldn't let you have your voice? Man, I appreciate you guys exercising that. That is the republic, Patrick Miller. And it's, it's messy and it takes time, but it is the best deal we got going and it's imperfect. And so thank you to the council who has allowed this for two years and has truly walked this out. That, that, my friends, is character, and I appreciate them for it. Um, we will now move on. Do I have any items on item 8A that needs to be removed from council for further acknowledgement? Mr. Simpson?
Are you, are you talking about the, uh, non-consent agenda, correct?
Not yet, so still on item 8A, we're moving into discussion items.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, if you have something you wanna pull on, uh, consent, I'll be glad to notate that now.
I'll do it at that time.
Okay. Um, okay, we're gonna move into a little bit of a business, uh, update, so we have item 8B. Mr. Hooper?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. So, a little bit of history on this, uh, on our Dura-Patcher program. Um, about a year ago, we started doing some research, wanted to find some equipment that could be more efficient for us when it comes to pothole patching, uh, and we found a piece of equipment called a Dura-Patcher. Uh, Alan and I did a lot of research on that, Alan Harder, that is, and we ended up going to Denver City. We went through a demonstration of a unit down there. We were pretty impressed with what we saw. Uh, so, we came back, we had discussions with council, fast forward, thank you, Andrew, fast forward to now, we have actually three of those Dura-Pachers in our fleet now that have been here. So, we set up a, uh, a demonstration with council, and I guess we have those slides somewhere, or the whole slideshow is not there? Maybe? All right, I'll just go through it, it's okay. Um, just kind of a recap of what we did, we set up some training with council, uh, to go out and operate this new equipment. Our thanks to Alan Harder too for setting that up. Uh, Alan went and, uh, spent some time with the operators, found a location that we could do that, that was safe and off the streets, and then we offered that up to council members to come out and operate that equipment. Uh, we gave them a tour of the equipment, its capabilities, uh, we actually had the mayor come out on April the 7th. We had, uh, Mr. Sherlin and Mr. Kraft come out following that on the 9th, and, uh, we gave some instructional demonstration period with the street division and showed those street division employees operating that equipment, uh, going through that, you can see right there, that's Randy Preciado, who's one of our street employees. Uh, he is an expert on this equipment already. Uh, he was joined by Paul Lundergren as well, and they, uh, gave a demonstration of what that equipment looked like. Council members are given the opportunity to operate the equipment while repairing actual potholes that were out on the site there. We went to our Olson, uh, street water plant, uh, roads that are on the internal part of that plant to do the work there, again, to, to stay out of the streets. So, and I'll, I'll reserve my comments on the performances that were, uh, uh, given out there, but I will say that with some practice, uh, I would be willing to bet that, uh, you guys could probably operate that equipment. Some of the comments that we did receive, um, on this equipment was, was, uh, that it was very easy to operate, it was very easy to get in there and control that joystick like playing a video game and operate it. You can see in this picture right here, this is Mayor Stanley, he's of course talking to, uh, Mr. Preciado as well and talking about the equipment. I would say also that some of the questions that were brought up were really good to us. There's Mr. Sherlin, Mr. Kraft, uh, going through a tour of that as well, and then there's the piece of equipment as we finally got in it, we're rolling out, and I put this picture in there because when we took this, we weren't even really looking at it until I got it back to the office, and you can see the smile on the mayor's face there as they were driving off, and I think that says all that we needed to know about this piece of equipment. Um, after watching the demonstration of how it works and actually getting in the cabin and driving off, every single council member that got in there had a smile on their face when they were driving off, getting ready to go do the work. This is just a quick, uh, briefing of, just showing you the photos of the patchwork that was being done out there. There's a simple joystick that you can operate in this truck that has, uh, five buttons on that that controls the mixture of the asphalt, uh, mixed with the rock, and then of course the cover rock that goes on top of that. There's also an air nozzle that blows out the hole as well. Uh, one of the things that came out in that training session as well is, and Mr. Preciado is one of the ones that's an operator of this truck, I believe it was Mr. Sherlin that asked him the question, "100 a day, we think we can do that?" And he said, "Well, when we first started, when the first day I got out on the truck", I think he did 43, uh, in a, you know, like a four-hour period, and he was brand-new to the operation. Now, they weren't, uh, pristine, finished, great, uh, patches, but they were just his practice runs, and he was able to complete that many in that short of amount of time. So, do we think we're gonna be able to hit those target numbers? We certainly do. Um, our next steps with these trucks are gonna be to continue to train on that equipment as we told you during the demos. We're gonna do that all through the rest of the month of April, then we'll actually be getting into the alleys and the streets in May. Uh, we wanna make sure that it is safe and that everything that we're doing is, is, is above board, uh, with those patches. And it can get a little bit tricky when you're trying to get the mix just right, as you saw when you were operating that, we just wanna make sure that's right before we get in the streets. There'll be an evaluation period as well, where we're gonna go through and evaluate the, the quality of product that we're putting down. We wanna make sure, in fact, we've already started that. Uh, talked to Mr. Harder just a moment ago, and we've actually changed a little bit of the mix, uh, that we have in there as far as the viscosity of the oil that we're using. We found that there was actually a flaw in the oil that we had, so we have a thicker product now. The patches that they're working on right now are much better than what you saw out there on-site. So we're already evaluating, we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, the data that we're gonna be collecting regarding productivity and infrastructure improvements is gonna be important to us as well when we bring a report back to you in October, uh, after six months of operation with that. We wanna be able to bring some true numbers back to you, we wanna bring some true feedback from the public, uh, and get, and put that back in the council's hands as well. So with that, I say there's questions, but I, I would say that, I, I don't even know that it's questions as much as that we would like to have your feedback. You got to operate this equipment, you got to also visit with some of our, our, our employees out there that we just turned them over to you and said, "Do your thing." And I was impressed with what they did, and I hope that you were too, so I'd just like to hear some of your feedback so that we can pass that along to the street department.
Questions?
No, I just appreciate you, Donnie, having us out and doing all that stuff, it's good to see Pothole Coal out there getting some potholes patched. Thank you.
Hey, we all know it's funny, so we can laugh, and old Pothole Coal needed all the help he could get, so this is gonna help us.
I would agree with that part of the statement, yes.
So the, the, what the, the whole, the most important thing of the whole presentation is that, one, you noticed the fact that my performance was really poor, right? But you also said it was the, the material that was, was the problem, it wasn't really my fault.
Yeah.
The viscosity of the material, sir, no.
It's the material, yeah.
Hey, uh, we're excited, and, and we're, we're honestly, we're not making light of an issue, um, we, we don't wanna take ourselves too serious. We've got a job to do, and we're, and we're trying to do it. We want you guys to enjoy your job and enjoy working for the city of Amarillo and serving the people of this community, and, and you guys have taken a beating out there because of our political, um, you know, issues that, that we're doing, and so I wanna take an opportunity to just say, like, you know, Pothole Coal is fine, it, it's funny, I get it, and it's part of it, right? But it is not the issues with the staff. The staff has brought this idea, they, they went and they researched it, they're on it. For years, you guys haven't been resourced like you should've. Um, I'm thankful to this council that we've pushed some money your way and that you're using it very, very well, and I believe that by this time next year, um, we won't be sitting in the same condition. Now, our roads are still gonna need lots of work, and I, I, I know that you guys set realistic expectations, we're not gonna get to all of them. But this will prevent the deterioration on some of those re- roads that we see where we're losing them faster than we should. So, uh, I'm grateful for you guys and, and, uh, Kraft made a t-shirt, but I wouldn't let him wear it, so...
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that, and one of the things we talked about in the presentation was the fact that there's a little bit of a misconception sometimes when it comes to pothole patching, that is the Band-Aid that gets us to the next big event, uh, that gets us through until we can get some major work done on a road, and I think having the opportunity to be able to express that, uh, with you guys that were out there on the, on the, on the site was important for us as well, and a chance for them to show off some of their skills too.
Yes, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Hooper?
Thank you for the quick presentation, sir. Um, I guess my only question would be, if your training's going well and you guys are figuring this guy out, how soon can we get you out on those main streets?
Well, we, we're really targeting right now, May, uh, and the reason why is we wanna make sure we get the mix right, we wanna make sure we have enough material that we can start going, um, so it all kinda fits into the plan that we had in the beginning, start doing our training in April, get on the streets in May. Now, if we see that that elevates and we're, we're really doing really well, and it's the last week of April, I'm sure that we can make an adjustment to that, but I think we're still on target for the first, uh, week or so of May, but we'll actually be in the alleys and streets doing the work with those three trucks.
Okay. You guys are in the alleys though, right now, right? Is that kinda where some of the trainings take place?
We're, we're not training in the alleys, we have done a little bit of work in the alleys as well, but what I think we realized early on is that we just really need to get good at that. We don't wanna create a problem, uh, and create a negative, uh, uh, look at this equipment when they're, when it's not necessary, because there is, there is an art to it, especially, uh, just due to the fact that this is a brand- Because there is, there is an art to it, especially just due to the fact that this is a brand-new technology. It's like playing a video game. And some of the operators that have been doing this for a long time, that have four or five controls that are operating all the time, to do that is a little bit of adjustment. So, we just want to make sure we get it right before we're actually putting it out, where the public is going to have to deal with that, make sure that we have a really good product for them.
And I need to reschedule my training because I heard he got a three out of ten on his pothole?
Who told you? Who told you that?
Viscosity, Don. So, yeah.
So, I would like to, my attempt, at least get a four. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, round it up. And I might mention too, for the other two council members that were unable to be there, we still have opportunity. If we can get that scheduled, we still want to look at doing that as well.
Pickball gets in the way sometimes.
We promise that we will not get in there and do those patches for you guys. You will have qualified, skilled employees. And then, we would like to see if you guys feel the need to put a truck behind them, maybe have another employee that could do, like, maybe the touch-ups around them, just to make sure we minimize any issues as traffic coming behind them would roll over those before they solidify.
Yes, sir. And that's one of the, that's one of the procedures that we, we'd already talked about it, but I think it revealed that we need to really start with that at the first as well, just for safety reasons. And not only for us, but also for the motoring public, too, until we get the art down. So, I appreciate that comment as well.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to item 8C, Vibrant Moms, Ms. Casey Stoughton.
Good afternoon. We're glad to be here today. The Vibrant Moms Project is a collaborative effort between Texas Tech Health Sciences Center and community partners dedicated to reducing pre-eclampsia rates and improving maternal health outcomes in the Texas Panhandle through prevention, education, and awareness. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Christine Garner, Assistant Vice President for Research in the Texas Tech School of Medicine, and Dr. Julie St. John, Associate Professor in the School of Health Professions, to discuss the Vibrant Moms Project in more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to tell you about the project this evening. So, Vibrant Moms is a project that has been going on since August of 2023. And it has been funded by the National Institutes of Health to address maternal health disparities across six Texas Panhandle counties, including Potter and Randall Counties. As Ms. Stoughton mentioned, this is really a community-led project. We have more than thirty community organizations who are involved in the coalition that has been guiding and leading this project, including what questions we ask and how we move forward. So, Vibrant Moms stands for verifying and implementing evidence-based programs for addressing needed transformations in maternal outcomes, measures, and support. It's a mouthful. And this project has really brought together a lot of community organizations with the purpose of improving maternal health. So, there's a maternal health crisis across the nation where this country has the highest maternal mortality rate of any developed nation. And Texas has higher-than-average maternal mortality rates and severe maternal morbidity. So, the aim of the Vibrant Moms Project is to identify community needs. So, we've been spending the past couple of years doing a community needs assessment to understand the challenges, problems, as well as resources. And so, we've been gathering a lot of information. The Texas Panhandle has kind of a unique situation. We have large areas of space that are considered maternity care deserts. They've been designated as such by the March of Dimes. And these are areas that have no maternity care access, including prenatal care or labor and delivery services in those counties. So, this is a county-by-county thing. In the top twenty-six counties of the Texas Panhandle, fifty-seven percent of those are considered maternity care deserts, and there are only six hospitals that do labor and delivery. So, additionally, up to thirty percent of county, of individuals in these counties are uninsured. And so, this includes women who are entering pregnancy. So, they enter pregnancy and they do not have insurance in place. So, we have, we've been collecting data using six different methods. We used inpatient records from the state to identify what are, you know, what are the biggest health concerns in our region. We use something called asset mapping, which is, which is a method where we identified resources to address maternal health problems that might be available. Maybe they're not doing it yet, but that could be used to help improve maternal health in these counties. And we've also conducted focus groups with ninety-seven pregnant and postpartum women to understand their challenges and barriers that they experience. We conducted key informant interviews with thirty-four individuals across the six counties and as well as a method called photo voice, where people took pictures and could really explain their story using pictures. And finally, our sixth method was a community survey that was led by Amarillo Public Health. We had a fantastic response with more than thirty-five hundred respondents. Our goal was eleven hundred. So, many thanks to Amarillo Public Health for their assistance in that. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of the key findings that we have identified through these methods. And then, I'll turn it over to Dr. St. John to tell you about plans for Phase Two. So, the first thing that we identified is that maternal health is really important to people here. People care about the health of moms and its impact and effects on their babies and children and the communities as a whole. And people recognize that. So, that was really encouraging for moving forward. We identified that in our area, we have a six-point-six percent pre-eclampsia rate, which is on the high side. So, it's estimated that nationally, pre-eclampsia rates tend to be around four percent. So, we have a higher pre-eclampsia rate in our region. We also identified that there's relatively low awareness of pre-eclampsia risks and prevention strategies. So, many people did not know, unless they personally were affected by pre-eclampsia, they weren't really aware of what some of those risk factors were. And I should say, pre-eclampsia is a condition that occurs during pregnancy that exists with high blood pressure. So, high blood pressure and then multiple organ systems can be involved. And it is one of the biggest causes of preterm birth, low birth weight. It's associated with very high costs. And so, it's a really big problem. There are no current existing local programs that address pre-eclampsia in our region. And pregnant and postpartum women want education and information, and they don't always know where to get it. Some barriers that we identified are particularly delayed entry into prenatal care or inadequate prenatal care. We identified that delayed entry into prenatal care was often because they were uninsured. And once they found out they were pregnant, maybe they were several weeks along, they had to apply for Medicaid or some other sort of insurance and then wait for it to become active. So, so in order, you know, in terms of thinking about preventing complications during pregnancy, starting prenatal care in the first trimester is really crucial. Distance to prenatal care, even within the city of Amarillo, was discussed as a barrier to getting care, being able to travel all the way to where they can go to their doctor's appointments. They all tend to be located on one end of town. And then, and then another, another barrier was really lack of education. So, education is needed. We identified that, that women need help with enrolling into insurance or Medicaid. And we also identified some strategies that people would be open to, including peer-led support groups or systems and working with community health workers and other sorts of things. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. St. John to tell you about our Phase Two plans.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garner. And thank you, Mayor, and the council for this opportunity, and thank you all for being here. This is data that you all told us, and we're super excited to share it. You all own it. And so, all this data now wet. We're not going to just hand you a pretty book. We're going to do something with it. So, we've already submitted a Phase Two proposal to the National Institutes of Health that's being reviewed. It's a five-year, what's called an implementation trial or study. So, that just means that there are certain strategies that we're going to test to see what works best in our community. And that's why we gathered all this data. We are focusing on pre-eclampsia. We want to reduce pre-eclampsia. And there's two main ways we're going to do that, an intervention, or it's just something that we do, it's something that we test. We know that this has worked in other places. It's an evidence-based intervention, which just means it's been studied a whole lot. It's gone through a rigorous process, and we know that this works. So, one of those is we're actually going to screen people for those risk factors. So, if we know that someone has these risk factors, we can help prevent pre-eclampsia. And then, we're also going to, for those that have risk factors, physician will make that decision if low-dose aspirin is appropriate for them. So, that's really the big-picture plan. How are we going to do this? I'm so glad y'all asked. We have thirty different organizations that are part of our coalition. Ten of those have agreed, "We want to do this at our place of business. We want to engage our community residents. We want to do this." So, there's ten of them. And what they're going to do is, so they've identified current staff who interact with residents. They're going to receive training as community health workers. And so, community health workers are lay health workers. They're people that share characteristics. They know people in the community. They may speak the same language. They live and work and play together, right? So, community health workers that know these people, they're going to, when someone comes into their place of work in these organizations, they're going to say, "I'm expecting. Great. Do you have insurance? Yes or no? If they have insurance, awesome. Do you have a healthcare provider? If yes, great. Make sure you talk to them about pre-eclampsia." They're going to go through education. They get screened for risk factors right then and there. If they don't have insurance, then we're going to help them apply for whatever they may qualify for. If they don't have a provider, then we'll have that warm handoff where we get them into care. And we're going to give them education about pre-eclampsia. And then, we're going to say, "Hey, now that you know about that, it's really bad. We want to prevent this. Let's see if you have any risk factors." And then, that information gets handed off. And the clinical setting, we're going to do some training of our physicians as well. Just a reminder, hey, this is the evidence base. This is, this is good for our pregnant moms. And so, just having kind of refresher educational sessions with them. So, in a nutshell, that's what we're, our plan is to do. We're really excited about it. We're very thankful for the support. We collected all this data. We said we'd come back and share it. And so, thank you for the opportunity to do that and share our plans. We have an active website. If anyone has questions, we'd love to sit and visit or come talk to you about how you can be involved. Thanks so much.
Questions, council? No questions? Thank you, too, ladies. We appreciate the update. And yes.
Thank you.
This goes hand-in-hand with kind of our women's clinic and I think what we're trying to reach into. So, maybe, Ms. Stoughton, could you come in, maybe tell us a little bit about where the overlap is on our side?
Absolutely. So, we're working closely with, you're good, closely with the team at Vibrant Moms and are excited to be part of that group. I don't know if I'll have a chance to talk about the Women's Health Clinic in a minute, but if not, our plan, if all goes through the consent agenda today, then our plan is to open for patients on Monday.
Women's Health Clinic?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Great. Well, we do understand the collaboration. We understand the benefit with Texas Tech Health Sciences here. And, you know, we're always looking to bring our resources in addition to what the public has. And so, where we become the solutions, and I think that's where we're looking at those human resources. So, we appreciate you two ladies for being here today.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stoughton. Counsel, anybody need a recess before we get into item 8D? We good to keep going? We'll go ahead and get into our library advisory board decision on a couple of books. And then, we'll do any future agenda items, then we may take a recess before we get into actual consent. Okay, so, let me start by inviting maybe Amanda to come up, our librarian, our director. And I think we're going to, we're going to have plenty of questions for you. But before we get there, I do want to go back through the process and just let you correct me if there's anything here. Because I think what I have heard in lots of testimony and comment is two different sides of an issue. One side is feeling like there's censorship and book banning and that these books were requested to be removed from the library. And I think what I'm hearing from testimony on the petitioner is that there were concessions that were asked for that these books remain in the library, but that we have some additional controls. And so, on both sides, what I am hearing is some things that relate to age appropriateness, you know, the protection of the innocence of a child, understanding that there may be a time and a place for different educational materials. So, do you mind answering that just as a starting point? And then, I would like to talk about the process as to why I feel that this is very needed for us to take this step and not just kind of kick it back down. So, do you, just give me your side of what they asked you to do and maybe where we have two different sides of that.
Okay. Well, good evening, council. I'm Amanda Barrera. I'm the Director of Library Services for the city. And so, what I provided Ms. Collier were the tools at my disposal as library director to address the concerns that she brought up about the three items in question. And that is the request for reconsideration process. She has mentioned wanting to segregate materials, to have a special room to place materials in that would only be accessible by individuals eighteen and older. To my mind, that involves a capital improvement project that would probably cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more. So, that is not within my scope of authority to offer her. So, what we did was offer her the option of our process to maybe address the concerns she had about the books, if that's what you're asking.
I think so. And so, let's talk about the process because I believe it to be a good one. So, you have, you have educational material and other materials that are in the library. You have a citizen, Citizen A, that says, "This is offensive or this is questionable. I don't think this belongs here." They have the ability to bring it to council individually. As your representative, you can always contact your mayor or council. Then, they also have the ability to go to staff, which they did. You tried to, I guess, appease that or bring some satisfaction to that personally, if I understand that correctly. And then, you went ahead and took it to the library board. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, the citizen first submits a request for reconsideration form. And then, I convene a reconsideration committee made up of Amarillo Public Library staff. They read or view or listen to the work in its entirety, and then, they submit reports to me. It's then my responsibility to go in, read all the books for myself, and then, measure that assessment of mine against the reports the staff gave me. And then, I render my decision and notify the initiator of that decision. If that initiator's not satisfied with that outcome, then they have the right and the ability to appeal that decision to the library board. And then, we have the next phase of the process where the library board has to go read all the items in question. And then, they set a meeting, once that's completed, and then, they vote on whatever decision they feel is right. They basically have three options. They can keep the items where they are. They can choose to relocate an item from one part of the collection to another. So, like, you might have a juvenile book moved from the youth collection to young adult or from young adult to adult. And then, the third option is to remove it from the library altogether.
Okay. How long have you been with the city of Amarillo Library Department?
Well, altogether, I've been with the city about twenty-four years.
Have you ever done this before?
It's never reached this level, no. And in fact, it's never even reached the library board before. board before.
So first time for you to take a, a book or books to the library board for reconsideration?
Yes. Generally speaking, once, um, someone who's concerned about an item has the opportunity to talk it through with library staff, then they feel their voice has been heard and that's where it ends. Or at least that's been the case up until now.
Would you say that the world around you and the library has changed drastically in the last twenty-four years?
Yes, that would be a fair assessment.
Okay. I think that we, as Counsel, have a role here. Um, we, we exercise this role in lots of different ways. Uh, public safety is an easy example. Um, we do regulate traffic. We regulate traffic controls. We regulate, uh, street signs. We regulate the speed at which you can drive. And we cite you for this. Um, we regulate the age that you're allowed to operate that motor vehicle. Um, so I think that in this process of bringing a book to Counsel, um, what I would hope to do is, I would hope to identify, do we have updated policies and procedures for you and, and your library board? Are they definitive, uh, objective, or are they subjective? Um, in this potentially becoming a, a reoccurring issue, what I would hope that we would avoid is, is, um, taking everything on, on, you know, one book or one magazine at a time, one issue at a time, continuing to bog down you and your staff and the library board to where we're running off those citizen appointees, because they don't want to get into that. So if we had something that I believe could be a little bit more rightly defined, um, and we could agree that we're not censoring, we're not banning books, we are protecting, uh, children and the innocence thereof. We're also working within age restriction. Uh, but then we, we really are kind of, you know, skipping over the one thing that I heard from both sides, which is parental control. And so I think that those parental controls could be, uh, very helpful. So let me, let me identify just a few things, um, before we go forward. You do currently already regulate content, correct?
We have sections of the library where light collections are separated out. So we have the picture books altogether. We have books for, you know, early readers together. We have the young adult collection, and then we have the adult collections.
And Ms. Barrera, I'm probably going a little different direction on that. Not saying like how you stage them or where they're at located in the library, but you yourself or your staff, you, you vet books and you already, uh, choose some books to come into the library and other books not to be allowed in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that could be interpreted as book banning. Um, and that could be interpretive as censoring. So the issue here is, is that we have a book that's already on the shelf, but we are asking you to vet, uh, material. So, uh, Hustler, Playboy, not allowed in the, in the library, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So they've been censored from a public collection. And, and the library is a public resource for self, uh, education, right? You, you don't conduct, uh, education, uh, form and programming in the library, right? I can come in, I can choose to educate myself, but, but I don't come in and, and you necessarily teach me a subject, do you?
Uh, not, uh, not like a curriculum, other than, you know, like English as a second language or something like that. For the most part, people are coming in for self-improvement and lifelong learning. We do have programs on things, but it's just mainly one-off.
Okay. And, and the reason that I bring that up is because it would be impossible for you to have an exhaustive, uh, educational ability. So like, we don't have a, an exhaustive resource at the library. It's limited.
Correct.
Okay. So we, we already regulate content that comes into the library and gets displayed on the shelves. You've testified a little bit further that you go ahead and you display as much as you can according to your policy and guidelines. Um, if we wanted to take another step in that same direction, um, seeing that this is not a private library, it is a public library, and that we are gonna, we are gonna regulate content because we're already doing that, um, do you believe that, that you as staff, and, and I would direct to, to our city manager as well in a, in a previous conversation, trying to improve upon policy? Um, do, can you point to any policies that you have, that, that you hold? Like, well, this is what I measure it up to. And, and if it's here, then it, it comes in. If it's there, it goes out.
So, about thirty-four hundred children's books are published every year. Obviously, we can't lay hands on every single one of those before we order them. So, we depend on reputable resources to gauge whether something is appropriate for the collection or not. That could be the publishing house, which is marketing to a specific audience. It could be, um, professional journals like Publishers Weekly. Um, it also are the distributors that we get our books through, like Ingram and Baker and Taylor. So one of the helpful tools they provide us is they give us a target age group for a book when we're ordering it. It might be seven to twelve, or it could be fourteen to eighteen. So those are some of the things that we use, um, in conjunction with our material selection policy to determine whether something's appropriate for the collection or not.
Okay. I think that's helpful. Uh, and I appreciate you entertaining me and, and letting me dig in here. Um, Counsel, I won't, I won't just hog the microphone. You guys can, can, you can jump in if you need to, but I am, I am steering in a direction here. You, you have age awareness and age appropriateness, um, recommendations from, from these individuals or these, these entities. Uh, would it be within your ability, and would it be within your recommendation, to create an age appropriateness, uh, regulatory, uh, policy?
The problem with that is, once you put that in the hands of staff rather than an external source, then it becomes a lot more subjective. And what is very tolerable for one group of people is not so much for another. So, that can sometimes open the staff up to liability if, um, someone doesn't agree with how the staff is evaluating that book.
Let's, let's switch to internet access. These are public computers. How, how do you, how do you deal with internets, internet access? Because that's way more restrictive. So like, do we have something that, that already restricts content that I cannot access on the computer?
Well, um, we have Kid Zone computers at each of our five libraries, and they have more extensive filters placed upon them. Uh, for the just general public access use computers, we have an internet usage, uh, guideline policy in place. And, um, with internet use, it's a little bit easier because there are definite state laws on what constitutes obscenity, uh, display in a public setting. Um, Texas Penal Code Sections forty-three-point twenty-one, forty-three-point twenty-two, and forty-three-point twenty-four make display of obscene material a criminal offense via computer. So, that's what we go off for internet access.
Well, if the picture that we had had earlier presented by Mrs. Collier had been, uh, publicly displayed, would that have violated one of those statutes in your opinion?
It would not, simply because, uh, there's actually, that, that image is distributed a lot online, and it's cleverly redacted because it blocks out a lot of the picture and it makes it look like fellatio's taking place, when actually it's two adult people who were assigned female at birth, so there's no actual penis involved in the, the action that's happening there. Um, the, the person's got the apparatus strapped on over her, over their clothes. So, um, it looks shocking when you first glance at it. And for some people, it is not at all comfortable to look at that, and I totally understand. But sometimes people make something out to be more than it actually is for the shock value. And, um, I, I just feel like this would be an example of that.
Describe to me if I was on the Kid Zone computer versus the regular computer and I, I Googled that image. Would it, would it have displayed it either, or would the filter have caught that?
On a Kid Zone computer?
Uh-huh, yes, ma'am.
Um, the Kid Zone computers only go to certain sites, like PBS Kids or something like that.
So, so on the, on the regular computer, could I have displayed that?
Yes.
You know? And it would be in public, of public view. What, what would your staff do if that was the case? Would, would you come and, uh, restrict my computer usage? Do you ask me to click out? What do you do?
Well, since it would not have met the obscenity test through the, the Miller Test, y'all have probably been informed on that. That's the three-prong test established by the Supreme Court. That book would, never would have been able to have been published if it didn't fail that, if it didn't pass that test in its entirety. So because it's part of a book that is not considered obscene in a legal sense, then we would not have, um, the right to ask someone not to view it.
Okay. So, uh, what I'm driving at is, do you feel like you have clear guidelines? Or do you feel like a lot of it is subjective for the staff or the employee? Because you, you mentioned liability. And so I think that may be on our side of the dais, where we're factoring that in a lawsuit and a potential financial issue. So, could we, could we help you and help staff by making it more clear so that staff would have protocols to work under, not necessarily just restricting somebody's use because of an opinion?
I would have to defer to Grayson and Brian on that, because, um, the First Amendment's really messy. I mean, it is not clear-cut. And so there are all sorts of legal tests and legal hurdles that you have to consider when you start locking things down, because then you're kind of exposing yourself to lawsuits.
I think that to try to address your first question, for Amanda, could you address the mayor's first question about, do you feel you currently have, uh, clear guidelines in place for staff?
Yes.
So I, I think staff feel like they have good reg, good guidelines in place. And so, uh, we would need direction from Counsel as to, as to the basis for a new policy to write, so we, we have that direction to go.
Yeah. Um, I, I believe we're getting there. Uh, let me, let me go more towards the bottom line. Um, what I have heard, and, and I would be willing to listen further, um, what I had heard that, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, we feel like in the world we're in, uh, you know, grants a lot of freedom, and with freedom comes responsibility. But down around the twelfth-year mark, you know, we, we identify that as a child, um, not a teenager, not adolescent. So I think that what I have heard from everyone here, and I would like to push for, uh, parental controls. I, I love the fact that we are all in here saying, "Raise your own kids." The library board, uh, the librarians, the library, not here to raise your children. So, do we have anything that allows for me to drop my kids off and not come back for eight hours? How, how does this work in the library?
In the library, we have an unattended child policy, or a policy for unattended children, I think is the official title. And what it provides for is that children under the age of thirteen must be, um, accompanied by some sort of adult caregiver or, um, a mature adolescent of fourteen years of age or older.
Okay.
And again, that's kind of on the parent to decide whether I'm going to let Big Brother take you to the library without me.
Right, which I believe in that liberty. And, and I think that, you know, the parents need to have the choice. I think we have an obligation and a responsibility to provide some, some guidance and, and boundaries in regulatory controls. So, I, I would love to see something that is, uh, defined with current state law and statutes. Um, you know, some of this might be sexualization of a child, uh, grooming, some of the, the things that you've seen the, the House and the Senate working on. In about another forty, forty-plus days, I think they'll have some additional, um, statutes that are passed. And so we could look at those and update accordingly. Now, I say that to say we're not trying to solve this tomorrow. I think that this could be an undertaking for policy. But I would really be going towards, um, what could I, as a parent, um, sign for you that allows my child to rent or, or check out or look at anything in the library, versus what could I be advised now, so there's an advisory clause of this, that we do have things that are not age appropriate according to our guidelines within the library. It's public, but it's not necessarily, um, limited, uh, in that way for, for your eleven-year-old, sir. So, if you sign this form, you understand that you're allowing them to check anything out. I might sign it as a father. However, if I'm, if I'm that other parent, um, what I might say is like, "No, I don't want them to be able to, to read or, or look at anything, check anything out that, that isn't within this guidance." And we could come up with a couple, maybe even just, just two, just a, uh, thirteen and below, thirteen and above guidance. And then I think that that would work better than trying to move things and shuffle things to the back wall in the library, where I'm not sure that I'm going to give you the staff to monitor that area. And, and I also don't think that the future Counsel will give you a, a CapEx project to go and, and alter a library just, just to try to do that. But I, I would say that I would find a, a great, you know, accomplishment and concession in bringing back a policy from staff that defines what these issues are, obscenity, pornography. You know, um, Edith gave a, a definition that pornography is anything that causes sexual arousal. Well, I don't know that you're applying that, you know, necessarily in, in those library books. But if that is the way that the state, um, defines it, well, then that gives you a, a good, uh, metric to point to in some of these books that are seeking to sexualize or, or to educate somebody about their sexuality. And so if we just said, "Look, our role as the public library is not to, to educate your minor, your, your child, or to allow that, because that, that's your role as a parent." Who's going to stand against that? And we're, we're protecting you as a parent. We're giving you, I mean, it's, it's your child. You can teach them about sex as early or as late as you want to. What we're saying is we just have state guidance. So, all of that to say, Mr. Path, that's my guidance. I don't know that I have the support of Counsel. They may not want to touch it. But if they were, tell me what I'm missing or what should be refined in that request.
If I'm understanding correctly, I think you, you suggested that there could be some legislation coming out, uh, the next forty-five days that may apply to this topic. Is that correct?
I know for a fact that you have the State of Texas that is, uh, putting forward several, uh, pieces of legislation. Um, you know, so we talk about our drag queen storytime and things like that that are marketed towards children. And we saw the state take action on that two years ago. We also saw a judge, uh, intervene in that. And so some of that legislation is coming back. And so maybe it'll be more appropriate to like, just, uh, the need or the responsibility for the state to give guidance to local authorities on how to prevent the sexualization of children. And, and I'm, I'm saying we could steer this policy. Uh, library content regulation policy, that speaks a great deal to our public. Most of our public showed up here today saying they don't want any censorship and they're against all censorship and book banning. I don't think that they, they would, uh, categorize you as, as a, a censor, or that they would say you've banned books. But there's, there's many, many books that you haven't allowed on the shelf. And so this is good in setting expectations that our public knows that we currently do this. This is not a new thing that this Counsel's taken on. But what this Counsel's taking on is, is more clear guidance just for parental consent.
Sure, yeah. I think, uh, if I'm understanding correctly, yeah, the state law Penal Code forty-three-point-two-one does talk about obscenity and, and those definitions. We could, obviously that applies to the library already, but we could put that into our own, into our own, own letterhead as a policy. And so that, that's easily done. We could also look at, uh, uh, I think I'm hearing the, strengthening the parental control aspect, which I know the libraries, ALA, they push for that, uh, drastically as, as parental control. And so not, not librarian deciding this, but parental control deciding that. So we can look at that a little bit. Um, so I think that, yeah, we could, we could revisit those things. I, I do believe that much of what we're bringing back, we'll probably, uh, uh, just put in writing what we're currently practicing right now. And so, but we could, but we could put that into writing as well. So Amanda, would you say that's a fair statement?
Yes.
Counselman?
Thank you for all y'all's hard work, along with library board. I just had a couple of questions for education. Um, so how old do you have to be to get a library card?
You can get one at birth. It's the parent that signs off on it.
And then what, what prevents, you know, say there's a book in the adult section. Is there anything that prevents from anybody checking one out? You know, you could be any age?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
For clarification, Amanda, for, so that is, under our unattended child policy, if you had a ten-year-old come up and, and, uh, what, what would we do in that situation?
Well, I can give you a personal example. I was working the reference desk once, and a little guy came up to me and said, "Do you have the Saw Three movie?" And I said, "Um, where's Mom?" And I found Mom, and Mom said, "Oh, yeah, we watched these together as a family." So that would be an example of how library staff kind of keep an eye on things.
So, so it sounds like there would be a process to, to maybe regulating some of that. And with, if there's not parental involvement at all, the part, the child hardly would be allowed to check out that book, or that movie you signed that, correct?
Well, assuming they're not unattended.
Yeah, yes, yeah. If, if a parent's there, a parent blesses it, then there you go. There, there's nothing stops that. And so, but if a parent's not there, then our policy steps in and says, "Where's your parent? We need to get your parent here." I remember I, I spoke with one of, one of the librarians here during my tours, and they had, they had, uh, met a whole group of U- and they had they had met a whole group of youth who'd biked into the one of the libraries. And they're all underage and we advise them, you now need to bike back home. And so because your your parents or your guardians are not here. So I think that would be a restriction to answer your question, Councilor Craft.
Okay. So let me just be clear. So another hypothetical here. So thirteen year old and then say a ten year old go to the library. They both have library cards. A ten year old goes up to the counter and wants to check out an adult book. That's perfectly legal right now within our current library policies.
Well, if we know the older child is not quite fourteen, then we would have already asked them why their parent isn't with them.
Okay, well, if they're fourteen? So say it's a fourteen year old and their little brother or sister, the little brother or sister wants to check out a book?
Correct. If we've received no prior instruction from a parent. We do have a notes field in our system. So if a parent has come up and said, I don't want my kids checking out rated R movies if they're with big brother, then we can note that in our system and we don't check out to them. But if we have no prior interaction with this this little family group, then we would just proceed with the assumption that the parent's okay with them coming to the library with the big brother and checking out whatever they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda, again, thank you. How do you know their age? Is there is a is date of birth part of the library card?
Yes.
It is. So we've already got that data captured?
Yes.
So that would be very easy to monitor, I mean, the age of anybody checking out a book?
Well, yes, assuming that the older child has a library card and assuming that they give it to us before the younger child attempts to check out.
Sure. So it's not even subjective, like for your staff. It's not subjective for them to say, well, gosh, this this child looks this age or whatever. They know. So it's very, you know, Mayor was asking, well, go, you know, if you had clear cut guidelines, it'd be easier to remove that subjectivity and therefore the liability and all that kind of thing. So they know the age when somebody presents their library card?
Yes, if they have a library card.
Okay, so but to check out a book, they have to have a library card?
Right, but if the younger child was checking out, but not the older child.
Yeah, we're just talking about one, just just one. So if, okay, so we've got that data. So but to Josh's point, so anybody under, even if they, you know, we read the policy of the under or the minor who's in the library, you know, if they're not causing any problems, it still doesn't matter because the behavior's good. It's not going to really cause any red flags. But if they go to check out a book or whatever, we already know. Yeah?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. So and and I would say, you know, to, you know, to all the comments that have been stated, you know, I don't think it's our job up here to legislate morality. You know, and I think that that's what it comes, you know, a lot of people are bringing that forward, you know, for fear of that, right, to legislate morality. I think people have said that's a very slippery slope, and it is. And I don't think it's up to us to put that on you. However, you know, it is our job to put policies in in place that are going to protect minors or children. You know, I think we all want to do that. I think everybody here would agree to that. And though I may not agree personally with, you know, some content, as you pointed out, the First Amendment's pretty muddy, you know, if that's what you want to call it. Everybody has their First Amendment right. I don't have to agree what, you know, John Adair says. You know, I might, but I might not. But I mean, that's his First Amendment right or to go video, whatever. However, I don't think it's our job to necessarily legislate that, you know, from up here, whether I personally agree or or I don't agree. What I would what I would really want to see is, like Mayor was saying, some policy to set forth because I wonder, you know, we have these different areas. You said adult, young adult and youth. Those are just, I don't know, I think if I'm a teenage boy, I'm going to the adult section. I think that might be where the best books are, right? I mean, that's, I mean, let's be real. I mean, that's where they're going to go. I mean, if they're, whether mom's there or not, they're going to sneak around and go do that. But really, the point of having those is 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 not really, Josh and I were talking about this, I mean, there's there's, it's irrelevant, right? Because a ten year old could go get a book out of there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so they can. So they can go pick up a book. It doesn't matter. And and I would say this too, I mean, regardless, you know, I see people shaking their heads or whatever. I don't care if this was heterosexual acts. I would say the same thing. This has nothing to do with a community or gay, lesbian. It doesn't have anything to do with that to me at all. It has everything to do with just the content. I mean, whether it's heterosexual or it's homosexual, doesn't matter to me. It's just the fact of protecting children and not over-sexualizing them. So what I would what I would like to see, just to go alongside with Mayor, is, you know, policy set forth that we can actually enforce, not just to have a policy, but I don't know, I love our process and that Misty can take this up the chain. I think that's a great process. And then, you know, ends up here, which that's great. My opinion is it's not our job. This is not council's job, nor do I want to open the door or set precedent that every single book that somebody has a problem with comes before council. And we get to decide on that. I just, that's just not our job. See, in my opinion, it's not our role. So what I would like to see is the library board, I know we have a member here from the library board, get together and put policy that would help with this. And I think our community would agree, you know. Again, it's up to a parent to parent. Whether I agree with the way they parent or they disagree with the way I parent, that's fine. I mean, it's it's fine. That's, we can all get along. You can parent your kids, have grandkids, however you want to. But what I would like to see is the policies in the library pump back to you guys and say, well, this is my opinion, it's in our job. This is not our job. But it is the library board's job, the library advisory board's to say, let's develop policy that makes sense because I think that there's a lack of policy or a lack of control there or subjectivity that I think we need to tighten that up to where it's easier for you and your staff. Is that, do you think that that's doable?
We can certainly try.
Is that a fair ask? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot. I mean, just be real. I mean, is that a is that a fair ask for the library board to get together and develop some policy?
Well, that's part of their job, you know, is to develop policy.
Well, we appreciate those volunteers.
Yeah, we can certainly have the library advisory board's staff revisit the existing policies and determine, is there things they want to button up based off this conversation? Having gone through this process now for the first time, is there things that they that they've learned from this that they'd recommend to the staff that we revisit as policy and and put in place in writing? And so that's a very fair request to make.
Okay. And again, I'm one of five. I don't know what the consensus is going to be after we go through this. But my hope is that we would come to some consensus, not censor or ban books or remove them, but to be in agreement to make the request to staff to have this done and allow the library board, whom this council and previous councils have put there, to develop some policy.
And I guess my next question would be, how high level of degree of citizen engagement would you like with this library, this new library policy? Because obviously citizens can come and engage with the library board whenever they meet.
Sure.
But do we need to go further than that and have like town halls or focus groups or something like that so that people can have input in what actually is incorporated into this policy? What they feel comfortable with as the people who use the library?
You know, that's a great question. But I would say that, you know, we're as elected officials, that we and others have appointed this library board. Now, I I think it's always good to take input from the citizens and certainly those that use it. I think that that's always good. I think that we always need to do that. But I think that we don't want to lose focus on what this is for, which is to protect our children. And again, allow parents to be parents. If they want to give them those books, that's okay. That's up to them. But I just would like a little bit better measures put in place to keep this from happening. And I think, I don't know, John may have told me, I think I think he looked at like this gender queer book that, you know, was one of the three that we're looking at. It was checked out how many times? Six?
I can actually.
You have it?
Yes.
How many? Okay, and it's been in the collection how how long?
It is actually, let's see, we got it. The first two copies were purchased in twenty nineteen. And then at the time that the reports were done, it had circulated forty one times. Now, obviously, it's been checked out a little bit more since, you know, it's gained some notoriety.
I think the city checked them out, actually. So, okay, so about eight times a year. I mean, again, I just feel like our children are worth it. And that's that's it. And parents can parent how they want to parent. But I think we've got to put some better guidelines in in place, is my opinion. Councilman?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for coming forward here. I just want to make sure I understood some of the things you said. You said actually that your staff is trained, correct?
Yes.
And is the library board trained the same way staff is? Are the values the same?
They are not because they don't have to have a master's degree in library science to serve on the library board. But we are there as staff liaisons to help them through that process and to lend our expertise to help them make informed decisions.
So there is no training whatsoever for your library board?
Are they trained on policies? Are they trained on procedures, those things that a board would be trained on?
Yes, they are. They are provided with all of our policies when they first come onto the board, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, and are these written policies?
They are indeed. And they're all actually approved by the library board, so.
Okay, so did it ever come back to council for approval? Or are we, I mean, I think what the mayor's getting to is we want a policy that is put forth that we know what y'all are doing out there. Because right now, from what I understand, we don't have any idea what the policy is or how the policy is applied. Is it subjective or is it not? I mean, when you've got five people on a library board or however many it is, you're getting people from different backgrounds, different ideas, different thoughts. But I seem to realize as this went through, basically, all the library board emailed wanting us to stay with their decision. And their decision was brought up and challenged. And I think at that point, it came to our court. And I didn't need emails telling me to stay with their decision. And I found that a little bit strange that they were pushing forward their ideas, which had been appealed to us.
The library board? I don't believe any of the library board engaged with council.
You don't think anybody emailed me?
The the messages I've been copied on, none of them were from the library board.
I can clarify, those were from citizens that were, I believe, in support of the library advisory board's decision and supported it. It was not library advisory board members.
It wasn't the library board members?
Let me redirect here real quick. Because I I think we are making some good progress. So I appreciate your willingness to look at the policies. They're old, they're outdated. We're asking for updated policies. We're also asking for education. And then we want to equip our library board where they're not in the balance out there constantly being, you know, asked to to engage in judgment calls. We want some things that are more black and white, less color. I think the state of Texas is going to give us some things that we're going to need to consider anyway. It would surprise me if they do not. This is not something, according to like the the checkout log, which I think stepped up lately, that we need to be under a drastic rush with. I would love to take some time. I do know that today I was updated that your library board is missing a member. So you think you have four out of five? What I would ask council is, when we're doing this, we're going to update policy. Why not move from five to seven, you know, members? Maybe, I mean, I'm not saying we have to go to nine, but I would I would consider a larger board if this is going to be something that they're trying to do in the new new world that we live in. So I'd like a larger library board appointed by the council. I would think that there also needs to be some sort of measure to where it has to constitute a certain level of value for this chamber. What I don't want is I don't want to allow, say, a political combatant that just knows, he can just submit a book every week and just constantly keep saying, well, I didn't get satisfaction. I want in front of the council, I want in front of the council. So at that point in time, we're we're not really working to protect our children and their innocence. We we are allowing ourselves to be involved in in kind of the circus of some social issues. And so to keep it black and white, I would love to see staff run that down. I don't need a town hall. I don't need you engaging at that level yet. What I would love to do is allow staff to do their job. Let Mr. Path lead this. Once he has something that he likes and that, you know, does what he feels like is the the request of this council, bring it back to council. Let us look at the library board. Maybe we meet board to board before we go that next step for community engagement. I'll ask if you if you feel clear on that.
For clarification, I think one of the clauses you'd be looking at in the policy is having that the library, library board's decision is final. Is that is that correct? So it would not go to the city council?
I would like it to be, I would like for there to be a mechanism that that could trigger it as an appeal. So we do this already. We we require so many signatures on a petition. We require something that shows it's not just a one off, you know. So what we could do is we could consider, library board is is the the say so. They're the authority. You have an appeal process, but that appeal process probably can't be what we're engaging in here. I think we are doing our job in allowing this appeal to come forward and hearing the full voice of the voter. But if we're going to take these steps to further refine the policy, I think we could take a few steps that would, you know, set some criteria where it it just makes it worth the fight for for that individual. And I think when that citizen knows, hey, this is wrong and I want it in public, if they have other citizens in whatever form you could get that, I mean, I would just look at a petition or something like that. And so do you do you hear, do you hear, or do you see a better way forward with that?
No, we can, we can try to work with that.
So just a mechanism that would would allow for the engagement to happen where it's appropriated. This body's willing to add representation down there so that they they have what they need. Councilman Simpson, I see your light on, was going to check in.
Yeah, so I think you stated, you've been at the library how long?
Well, we're going on twenty four years, cumulatively speaking.
And this is the first time that that this type of appeal has come up to this level?
That's correct.
So I think, I mean, so I guess that, I mean, that does, I think, signify that, you know, we, the policies that we've had in place seem to have served served us pretty well, although there's definitely room for improvement, that it's the first time that it's happened. I guess my question is, just to clarify the two things that we're looking for. One is making sure that we have the right policies and guidelines on what material comes into our library?
Yeah, so let me recap and and go with that. I think that there are several things we're accomplishing here and communicating to our constituents. One, we already regulate content. We're already doing that. The guidelines that we use, obscenity and things like that, I think can be further clarified and can be updated to state standards that that we're expecting a few changes.
Sure. So, yeah, so so policies and guidelines on how material gets into the library. And then making sure, and and I I do agree, I think, one thing I've heard from a lot of people is the parental involvement. And I think parents are the ones that can make the best decisions on this. So I guess the second thing you're looking for is making sure that we, I guess we are emphasizing that parental involvement. And which, and somebody made the point, I mean, we do, we we have rules and regulations to to protect minors in various aspects, whether it's alcohol, vaping, you know, those types of things, to be able to do that, to make sure that whatever, movies, those types of things, to make sure that that whatever they're doing is appropriate. And I think just looking at, and that, you know, that it can't happen or you have to have parental permission on that. To me, whatever we can do to make sure that we have that that the parents are involved with this or we know their wishes, it seems to me it would be, maybe I'm simplifying it fairly easy to identify, here's material that can be checked out by anyone of of any age, or here's material that if if a someone comes to check something out, that just like they could not buy cigarettes or or something else, that they're not allowed to take that unless a parent is with them or agrees to that. Is that is that simplifying that? Is it too hard to to institute that or?
It's certainly something we can investigate.
Okay, good.
So Councilman Simpson, I think you're you're saying it correctly. We we want to educate our population what we currently do at the library. We now have educated everyone in here that we have a unsupervised child clause or or policy. policy. I don't know that everybody knew that, but like, you can't just drop your eight-year-old off at the, at the library and leave, correct? You notify the parent. Yeah, so, um, in doing that, what I would like to see is, and, you know, a recommendation from staff to increase the size of the library board. Then I think we need to make a nomination, um, to go ahead and, and get that board back up at full capacity and potentially add the two on a vote, or whatever the recommendation is from staff. And then what I'm asking for specifically is a library content regulate, regulation policy, and it incorporates all of these things. So, um, we would cite the updated state statutes, uh, to protect, uh, 13 or under 13 is, is where I, I think we're going. This is all going to be driven by staff.
Yeah, so I think obviously the legislature has a few more weeks to go, and, uh, so this may be some time to bring it back to, but, uh, but, because we, we would want to, if, if they were to pass a bill, we want to make sure we, we change regular policy based on bills that are passed, not bills that are considered. And to say, uh, so, uh, we'll just take some time, we'll work with the library advisory board on this, and based on what I understand, uh, this council would like to, like to see that policy upon completion with recommendations from the library advisory board.
Very, very well spoken in that. I think you've got it. I think we're going to be looking for everything from recommendations on, uh, library board size, the additional members, all the way to forms that you would have parental consent form, uh, or something digital, you know, where I can check it off so that that librarian would know if this is allowed, you know, for that child versus the other. So I feel like this is the best that we can do with this issue here today. This is not an up and down, uh, question. Uh, this is a question of can we do better? So item 10B, I think we would be well-served to take no action on that, uh, because these books are currently checked out of the library, I have a couple, and I don't, I don't find it to be a, a threat to our, her, um, youth currently. I'm not saying there's not other things we need to consider, but I do ask for the patience and the continued patience of those that have brought this forward. I know you've been working on this for six, eight months now already in getting through this process, so if you can give us a couple more, then I, I feel confident that staff can perform and, and we can accomplish the goal of protecting the innocence of those under 13.
Now, can, ask, the next scheduled library advisory board meeting is when? Is it June?
Yes, that's correct.
So you meet every other month?
Yes.
So this could be a long process?
I'm sorry?
This could be a long process?
If it's deliberative, yes.
So y'all have got to get together, you got to discuss this, I mean, it's, I mean, much like this, maybe not on the same scale, but it's going to be a lot, do y'all ever call special meetings?
We, the board has that option, and in a lot of cases with policy, we do a lot of the low work for the board, so they're not having to start from scratch.
Okay.
So what we would do is work with city management to try to incorporate the elements that you've been talking about, and then we would bring it to the library board for them to review and, and start that discussion.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Barrera, for being here today.
Can I say one final thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to thank our staff review committee and the library advisory board for all the hard work and effort they've put into this process, because they, they really put a lot of thought and deliberation into it, and I'm so grateful for all that they do.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate staff taking this on. I guess the last thing I'd say is just get cracking. You know, it's going to take a minute, but let's get after it. Um, thank you for the discussion on item 8D. We'll move on to item 8E. Do I have anything else for a future agenda item from any of my city council? No, okay. Uh, going to go ahead and call another 15-minute recess, bring you back in here, we'll go through consent, non-consent, thank you. Number nine, pay through wherever, um, consent agenda. Council, do I have anything that needs to be pulled off on the consent agenda?
I would like to, to pull 9J off.
9J?
Yes.
So, any other items anybody needs to pull off for further discussion? Okay, uh, would entertain a motion on the rest of, uh, section nine?
I move to accept the consent agenda minus item J, uh, as presented.
Second. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, item 9J, uh, I know we have staff that can speak to this, um, but I, I'm also a huge fan, and I just had a pretty good discussion with Ms. Cassie Green, and so, um, some of this concern over this item seems to be related to, like, government control, government overreach, things that we're doing. So I just want to start the conversation this way. As a, as a show, anybody here that's, that's, uh, persevering through these long meetings, it's got some stamina, raise your hand if you're against homeowners' associations. You don't think we should allow homeowners' associations, right? I got one guy back there that doesn't like paying the fee. Um, okay, PIDS, property improvement, or is it property improvement, uh, district? Uh, public improvement district, sorry. Anybody against PIDS in here? Okay, I don't see any hands on that one. Oh, no, same guy. Sorry, sir, I don't remember your name. Um, so, a, a mud is allowed and has been allowed for almost 40 years in the state of Texas. Now, do, do we, anybody in here, you know, believe in private property rights? Like, that's me raising my hand, like, I really believe that government should keep its hands off of your private property as much as possible. Now, the things that I just noticed to you invade or encroach on some of your private property rights, and they do that on the front end, and that's why they're okay. I knew when I bought a house on the golf course that my house is going to get hit by a golf ball. It is my own fault if I'm upset that you are traipsing across my backyard to try to get your, your golf ball because I feel like you shouldn't be on my property. I'm the one that bought the house in the middle of the golf course. So homeowner associations are never done after the fact, they're done on the front end. You signed up to be in the homeowner association, they gave you every restriction, they told you you couldn't put a sign in your yard, they told you you weren't able to fly a flag, and, and for some of us, we go and we live in the country, because we don't want anybody telling us we can't have chickens. So in this sense of PIDS, HOAs, things like this, a mud, a municipal utility district is set up on the front end, and what it does in this hybrid model is it allows for us as the city to grow with our developer. Now, we have a choice before us, we can continue to grow the way we have. So you already have the right as the property owner who owns that section of land that's adjacent to the city to do your development. We cannot stop you from developing, nor would we want to, but if you're outside the city limits, your bar ditches, your paved roads with asphalt, no curb and gutter, your well and septic, you're not getting city utilities, you're not getting, uh, trash service, so the density that is required for that, once you involve a well and septic, is one to two acre to five acre tracks. You've got to be 100 foot from that well to that septic, which means you cannot put in dense housing. So that is the reason that those lots cost a little bit less on the front end, but ultimately you spend the same amount of money to build that, that house, and you can put up your shop and have your horses and whatever they allow. But when we want affordable housing and we want more dense housing, where we end up right now is, is we have a developer that comes in, and I'm going to give you the 70-30 rule. A hundred million dollar development is what is being proposed over on the west side of town, and the developer said, um, "We want to put in 3,000 homes, and we would like to annex into the city." So we, as the city, said, "Great, we need you to pay for an extra $30 million worth of stuff." Well, my development makes sense at 70 million, I can't get it to, uh, take off at 100 million. Well, we want a fire station, we want these roads widened, we want this upgrade on sewer and water and all this. So, uh, other, you, other communities have used things like impact fees, where they just, they just fee it, so every lot has to pay a fee in order to compensate the city. We, as the city, then come in and we adopt those services, and we take those on, and we charge you as a user. Well, what's happened over the course of construction in the last five, six years is construction's gone through the roof, and you have developers that are choosing to build outside of the city. So, uh, Mr. Hartman will tell you, these wells that are over on that side of town, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you how many years, they don't have a likelihood of longevity. So we believe that our neighbors that are building over there are going to need to buy water, that is why we are one of the largest water rights holders in the state of Texas. So if we want to engage with our neighbors and we want to help those that are closest to us, adjacent on our, our corporate limits, what we could do is we could have a hybrid mud model, and what this does, much like an HOA, it tells that buyer on the front end, "Hey, your house is going to cost less on the front end, but you've got to pay an additional fee to live here, and one day, when that fee pays off the, the 100 million dollar debt, then you will be annexed into the city." So you know already that you are in a, uh, taxing entity. You're in a mud that is taxing you on the front end until that debt is paid off, and then you're being brought into the corporate city limits. It's, it's all done in, in a way that is, uh, collaborative, um, it has absolutely nothing to do with the World Economic Forum, the UN, the 2030 Agenda. This has nothing to do with city regulatory body. Th- this is in the state already. This is like saying homeowners' associations are taking away your, your civil liberties. They're not. You took them away when you signed up to live in that homeowners' association. And so a mud works the exact same way. Now, the reason I'm a fan of this is it allows for the developer to take all the risk. You see, as a city, we would have to go out and put $30 million out along with that developer and speculate over the, the next five to 10 years. Well, what have we heard in here? Get over to East Ridge, get to the northeast side of town and start replacing those water lines. Well, I can't do that if I got to go put $30 million in to grow. So the way we grow is we let the developer take 100% of his own risks. We take all of the, all of the good in the negotiated agreement, we start adding on those sewer and water users, they're now paying into our system at one and a half times, 150% is what their water bill's going to cost them versus living inside the city, so that when we do annex them in, their water bill goes down, their tax rate goes up just a little bit. But this potentially, potentially could save the cost of construction on the front end. You know, the state has some, uh, data that says $100,000 per housing unit lower for them. I doubt that. I bet you it's $30,000 or $40,000 less per home. So the competitive market that's there is, is, uh, helpful to my buyer, it's helping affordable housing. The protection of your private property and your personal rights is there, because everything's done on the front end. You're signing closing statements, you've read it all, everybody's told you what you're, what you're signing up for, and then this is just a template. We're, we're not even doing this. What this is, is council saying, "We're going to put this template out, and if a developer so chooses to work within this framework," then the council could vote on that at that time. So nothing's cooked up, nothing's been agreed to, we didn't do a deal with the developer, and, and we're, we're executing this deal. This is a template that we know helps us grow in, in and outside of our city limits, and it protects your monies that you're already giving us that are limited in taxes. And so we're putting more money into repair and replacement of sewer and water mains, which are breaking fairly often and aged. Um, staff has weighed in on all this. If anybody's opposed to it, it should be staff, um, because it relinquishes some of that control of, "Hey, we have our water, we want to force you to annex." And so the state changed all this. How many years ago now, Floyd? Five years ago, six years ago?
2019.
2019. No involuntary annexation. The city used to could come out and say, "We're annexing your section of land, you will be part of us, and we will force you to put these, uh, infrastructure improvements in." We cannot do that according to the state any longer. So if we want to continue to landlock ourselves and see our city taxes on our tax base go up and up and up, then we continue doing exactly what we're doing. If we want to cost-share this and expand our tax base, then we need to figure out the right way to grow. This is a very, very good policy, and it's not the only one. But it has nothing to do with anything that's going to put you under the thumb of big brother government. So I, I give you all of that, um, maybe to hopefully not kind of call on anybody and, and move this forward. Um, I'm a, I'm a huge believer in it, I wouldn't put it out if I thought it would hurt or harm the city in any way. So, council, questions? Mayor, I, I would say, and I, I agree with you, and, and I'm very comfortable with this. I've had a couple of people that have reached out and say, "I'm just trying to learn a little bit more about this." But, uh, whatever, i- i- if we pass this today, it could be changed in the future, correct? I mean, we have the opportunity to do that. I, I, I'm ready to approve this today, I have no problem with it, I think it's good. One thing I would emphasize though, but I've had a month or more, and you've had far longer, a couple of months, so I've, I've got my questions answered, I've been able to focus on it, and we, we've gotten some good answers to those questions. I just think whatever as a staff, maybe making sure that we're reaching out to the community, to the various stakeholders that do development, whether it's, you know, realtors or developers or those types of things, just to make sure that they begin to understand the value of this as well. So I'm, I'm, um, I, I think this is a great idea, I think it can solve a lot of problems for us and, uh, do it i- in a way, so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I think, uh, any education that we can do to make sure that we don't get, because if we get too far out of the, uh, ahead of the community, then people are going to be saying things that aren't true or they'll make stuff up if we don't get the, the facts out there. So whatever we can do and maybe whatever staff could do to make sure that we're working to, to educate stakeholders in the community about the value and benefit of this, I think would be a, a good thing to look at.
I like that, I think that's really good. I know we hired a fantastic consultant, um, that came in and they really helped us adopt all this and put it into, they, they speak so much more eloquently than I just did in kind of mapping this out. Um, why don't we put it up on our next council meeting to bring that, uh, consultant back in to recap this, now that everybody's listening? It's not that we haven't done this, it's that you just didn't hear it the first time, and I get that, because we're all busy, and sometimes you don't know what it stands for. I mean, you know, when you first heard mud, but we've gone through an election s- cycle and season, or we're nearing the end of it, and so you've heard a lot of people, candidates, that are saying things now, and it's kind of piqued, uh, your listening ears. So let's bring it back, uh, I'd say let's vote on it here today, um, let's put it in place, we know it's good policy. No reason to back up on good policy, no reason to back up on further educating the public either. We bring the consultant back and we let them speak to it again and, uh, move forward there.
Yes, sir. Entertain a motion on 9J?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to accept 9J as stated.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 9J passes. Um, moving on to 10A, we have a public hearing. Mr. Brady Kendrick, where you been? How come you hadn't been in here in a minute? Welcome, sir.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance, um, 8190. This is, um, an ordinance considering the rezoning of a tenth of an acre portion of Lot 2, Block 1, GOW Clock subdivision unit number 12. This is in Potter County, Texas, in the vicinity of St. Francis Avenue and the Dumas Highway, and the applicant is Furman Land Surveyors, Inc., for Ameril National Bank, who manages a trust for this property. They are proposing the rezone from residential District 1 to like commercial district. There is currently a property transaction in progress involving this property and a neighboring property, and they essentially want the pr- new property lines to match up with zoning district lines for this area. That way the property is not split-zoned between R1 and LC. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered all the factors involved with this property, and given that it's, um, neighboring existing commercial zoning and is also located at the, um, area of a major highway intersection, they believe that the request was appropriate and matches zoning and development patterns in this area. Public notices were sent on this item, and no comments have been received as of this meeting today, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item with a 6-0 vote.
Thank you, sir. Questions, council? Okay, it's a public hearing, so at this time, we will open a public hearing. Do I have anyone here who would like to speak for or against item 10A?
Just kidding.
No, sit back down. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and would ask for, uh, would ask for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 8190 as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion on this rezoning? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote, we'll move on to item 10B. I recommend to take a no action on 10B. Council, you've had a little bit of time to think through this, everybody still comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take no action on item 10B. Uh, moving into item 10C, um, I would like to pull that item, but I need to hear it from staff. Uh, I have a couple council members that are serving Uh, I have a couple of council members that are serving as, um, uh, temporary board members. So tell me what, what the status is with the AEDC on the Thrive program.
Yeah, so there was some discussion at the last board meeting regarding some legalities of it. So we're just doing a little more research on it. Um, we didn't vote on it. We voted table it at the last meeting.
When's your next meeting, councilman?
Uh, I can't remember the date.
Are y'all on, are y'all Mondays?
No, it's, we kind of made a joke because we said we weren't going to be there, so.
Doug, Doug's got the date.
Yeah, Doug's got it.
When's the next meeting, sir?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth?
But there was no time deadline for this. This is basically extending the contract an additional year to allow the freshmen, I think, to allow them three years to complete their sixty hours, which is under the Thrive program. Uh, it was brought up that we weren't positive on the legality of it. So we said, we're gonna, there's no reason not to dig in a little bit deeper and look. So we just tabled it to vet it a little bit more. So. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct.
Okay, um, well, I think we need you, uh, EDC board and we need, uh, or staff and board before we could take action on this.
Right. We haven't approved it. The EDC board has not approved it, therefore I don't think council can, there's nothing to approve technically.
Yes. Yeah, we tabled it and so, uh, our recommendation would be for y'all to table it.
Okay, um, council, we good with tabling this until it comes back up?
Yep.
Okay.
So I move to table item ten D.
Uh, ten C.
Uh, ten C, sorry.
It's all right. So we got a motion to table item ten C.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. McWilliams, I saw you. Did you, did you have any concern on any of that?
No.
Okay. Well, um, we have a council meeting same day. So I don't know that we'll put it on for them, but we will get it soon. Okay. Um, item ten D, we do have, uh, Mr. Nelson here as our interim. So thank you for being here, sir. And, uh, if you don't mind, walk us into this one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, basically this is, this item is the revised AEDC policies and procedures. Our board approved these on March seventeenth with four oh vote. Um, basically this is an update, so there are some, uh, minor changes, some spelling corrections, those kinds of things. But I'd like to walk you through the major items that were changed in the policies. So if you turn to page, um, two forty, um, there was a slight change to match our certificate of formation and our new bylaws. So there's some language there about the annual budget and the council approving policies and procedures. Then on page two sixty-nine, uh, we made some changes as it relates to the budget. So, um, in our new bylaws, uh, AEDC only has the ability to spend up to a budgeted amount. There is no moving between budget categories anymore. Um, in addition to that, on nine point three, uh, we changed the credit card policy. Uh, every Amarillo EDC employee is issued a City of Amarillo purchase card. And that is the required, uh, method to purchase things as for our employees. Uh, there is an emergency provision that's on page two seventy, uh, in the case that that purchase cards turned down. And there's a policy, now we have a policy on how you get reimbursed if you have to use a personal card. But basically we are using the City of Amarillo purchase card. And those are the main highlights. It's a long document, but not a lot changed in the document. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Real good. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Nelson?
No, sir.
No. So are you, are you having trouble with the credit cards or is that resolved?
No, um, the city changed vendors and it has helped our issues tremendously. Uh, we were getting turned down, I would say about one in every twenty transactions. And now it's more like one in a hundred. So, uh, the, the issue's been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nelson, thank you for continuing to work on all these.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate the teamwork on your side and getting all this to us. And it has taken a while, but, uh, the document is, is good, right? So thank you. Um, would ask for a motion on item ten D. We'll keep moving.
Move to approve item ten D as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on item ten D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten E, um, our board members. So, uh, for whatever reason, this, this has my name below it. So I guess I'm presenting this one. So, um, I'm not necessarily presenting board members. Uh, let me present where we've been. We've gone back and forth. I was the odd man out. Uh, it was a bit of nostalgia from like, you know, three years ago when I was always the odd man out. Like you guys didn't want to move. It was, it was hold and we're not doing anything. And then we came back and we said, look, we really aren't changing anything other than just slowing things down. And, and we ran it from like, it'll be three months. Uh, if, if at best, if we, if, if we kick this down the road. And, you know, you know, more realistic's like six months. You know, you get in a runoff and then you've got some other things. You onboard a new board. You've got everything else going. Do we really want to slow down? With everything else we've got going with the EDC, we've taken all the criticism already. Um, now is the time to act. And so that's where I was driving the last meeting. Um, we, we've kind of come back to where, uh, I think we're still in a four to one, but we're, we're, um, we are willing to move on this. So today I ask for your consideration to give a nomination of who you would like to place as a board member. And let's place a permanent board and let's move them out there. Let's go get that new director. Uh, let's put this team together. Let's follow that up with a strategic business plan. And let's start getting the good news coming back from the EDC. So council, any discussion on item ten E?
I mean, I'm.
No?
I'm fine with giving, uh, recommendations for appointments today.
Okay.
I don't know if you're wanting to do, I mean, I don't know how you want to do it.
Is that, is that the discussion you're wanting? Whether to move forward or not move forward? Are you asking for candidates?
No, I'm asking for candidates. And so my, my, my discussion today is to request your nominations for permanent board members, placing them in the seats that are expiring in one year, two year and three year terms. And then furthermore, uh, asking for them to not be activated or fully sat, sworn in, whatever you'd like to say, until later in May. And so what we had discussed previously was we wanted to get you through your next board meeting and then let them get sat after so that we weren't swearing somebody or we weren't nominating today and trying to remove you guys prematurely. And so if that's the case, uh, it was solving a little bit of, of kind of both sides of, of the compromise. If, if we don't feel that way, we can just make nominations today and, and you can put it on your next board meeting, which is the thirteenth. If you'd like to put it on the, a future board meeting after that, it would give you the thirteenth to go ahead and finalize the work that you have left to do with your search firm. And now we've gotten all the documents done. So I believe the only other thing would be the search firm. What's the status on that?
Well, we're, as far as I know, Doug, you can, you can contribute to this. Uh, have we identified the firm? But I think we're in a holding pattern until the permanent board is appointed, correct?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
Yep.
Is that the, the document for the RFP to go out and solicit search firms for that search is ready.
Right.
Um, we have not sent that out to the potential search firms as of yet. Um, we were in a holding pattern. My understanding was a new board was going to be placed and that they would make the decision about who the search firm will be. That process can happen very quickly. Um, as soon as we send it out, we should be able to get responses within two weeks.
Doug, maybe we just go off your recommendation and, and our other two here that are serving. Would it be fine to go ahead and appoint and swear in on the thirteenth? Um, that way you guys could run a meeting and, and I don't know if you would award that. Well, you wouldn't award it. You would just, you would execute the RFP. So that would be, that, that seems to be, uh, pretty expeditious. Like, is that good in your recommendation or do you think we need to push it later?
No, there, there's nothing that, from our standpoint, that would require this to be pushed.
Okay, so I like the timeline. We would, we would appoint board members, permanent board members here today. They would get sworn in on May thirteenth. You guys can hold your, your board meeting at that time. And that, that really, uh, with what I'm seeing, you know, we now have all of the documentation finalized, bylaws and everything. There was nothing else that you guys still felt like you needed to be on that board for, uh, other than the search firm, which I feel like y'all have done the vetting process on the RFP. If you're, if you two are comfortable and I'm not getting any recommendation different, then I think I'm good to move us into nominations.
So for clarification, the, the swearing in would be at the EDC board and so that eat, that new board would be the ones making, discussing these items here?
They'd be off and running on May thirteenth. So no further delays. Okay. Um, well.
So where, that's where we're at?
Well, if, if that is where we're at, I would love for us to nominate board members. Thank you, Doug. You better go sit up, sit back down before we ask another question.
Well, first at that point, I mean, I'll, I'll throw out a nomination of Dean Crump.
Okay.
I think he's a good, uh, position. I think he's a good person. With everything that's going on, I think he's kind of middle. And I think that that's a good, a good way to do this, this deal. He's a business guy. Um, dedicated Amarillo, um, but I think that he's independent and is not necessarily looked at as.
Yeah.
Either one of these sides. I think it, it provides maybe a little bit of unity in that thing. So.
Okay, well, I, I like the way we all work together. We've never gotten in here and tried to just throw a bunch of stuff out and get a second and get a vote on it. Uh, we've all just been able to talk. So I think we let everybody put out, you know, one or two names of, of who you're looking for. And then, um, I'd like to come back in whatever order we start. So you're first. Uh, who would like to go second?
I don't mind. Uh, Joe Alcrone, he could be a good, uh, fit on that board. Joe Alcrone.
Joe Alarcon.
Am I pronouncing that right, Joe? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Kraft, do you mind saying that, just like he just said it?
Joe Alacron.
Uh, are you, are you limiting to just that one or did you have more than one nomination?
Uh, I brought a total of four nominations. Um, others would be Randy Burkett, Elliot McKinney. Uh, and Dean Crump was also on my list.
And who was the other one? You said Elliot McKinney?
Yep.
And I will tell you, that was one of my second as well. I didn't know I could give more than one.
Well.
Cut me off.
Do you have, I did cut you off.
Yeah, you did. So that's fine.
Do you have any other than, um?
No, that's it.
Dean and Elliot?
That was it.
Okay. Okay, would, would ask for this side, any nominations?
I'll nominate John Adair.
John Adair.
And another one would be, uh, Elliot McKinney.
Okay, so we have three nominations for Elliot?
Oh, dude.
No, that's, that's good. I, I like tracking it. Was he yours as well, Kraft?
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, Councilman Simpson, if you're willing to make a nomination?
I'm fine.
Okay. Appreciate you, sir. Um, I'm going to surprise everyone in the room. Uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Alex Fairley, um, to serve the shortest or soonest expiring term. Um, I, I like his leadership and I like the way that he has worked down there and he's engaged more so than we ever thought. And I don't, I don't mind the political incorrectness at all. Um, man, I'm, I'm not a good politician, even though I, I will admit, I think when you've been here four years, you, you are a politician, you know? If you're on the, the, the field and you got a glove on your hand, you're a ball player. So I get it. I just am not good at it. And that's all right. I'm not trying to get good at it. But, um, the guy gave me a small amount of money. Uh, forty thousand dollars in my world is a small amount of money. I got a customer right now owes me three hundred and four thousand dollars. And I don't do any favors for any customers and they owe me a lot more money than Alex has given me. Um, and I get that he gave twenty-three million dollars around the state. Man, great fact. Uh, you know, you, you can talk about that all day long, but it does not change the integrity of the process that we've walked out here. So I'll definitely take this one on the chin and, and stand there staring you right in the face and tell you, I am putting together the best team that I can. And, uh, and I think Mr. Fairley is a good one. Um, I also would nominate Randy Burkett. Um, the guy had been a city council member. Um, he's a good business person. Um, you know, I, I love Deepak Patel. I look forward to us actually utilizing him with his expertise. He's an international businessman and he understands far, far more than what we're, we're letting him bring to the table. But, uh, the future's really good for Amarillo. We're growing. We've got some good stuff. I love the fact that here in about a month, I'm going to show you the pipeline. And every person who has said, we have gutted the AEDC, the pipeline is empty. Well, I'm here to tell you, the pipeline ain't empty. And there's some good stuff rolling our way and I'm going to put the best team in, in, uh, on the field that I can to handle what's coming. Cause, uh, it's really good and it, and it's, uh, it's really good for all of us. So, um, I, I'm good with putting those out there. If we don't have any further discussion, I would come back to, uh, tips if you wanted to go and, and tell, if you, if you, if you would like to solidify your nomination first, you've given us a couple.
Right. So, uh, Elliot and Elliot McKinney, Dean Crump, I think for the same reasons, I think that they're both, um, they're both good business people. They're both dedicated Amarillo, um, and they're neutralist.
I'm, I'm, yeah, but I'm asking for a motion for you to pick one. Sorry. I, I agree they're both. No, 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 I don't think you, I, I think we refrain from selling or detracting from any of these individuals. I'm, I'm not trying to get into, well, I like this guy, I don't like that guy. What, what I'm doing is giving us an opportunity to go ahead and nominate and then see if you can get a second.
Okay, I'll nominate, uh, Dean Crump, uh, for a two-year term on, to serve on the AEDC board.
Have a nomination for Mr. Crump. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Dean Crump. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Any abstaining? Aye. So we have three to one to one for Dean Crump. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Kraft, would you like to make a nomination?
What was the terms again as far as the length of the time?
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll give direction to staff. Are you okay with that or do we need to do that as we go?
We can, we can identify right now for you if you'd like.
Yes, and so that motion for Dean Crump that you passed would put him in one of the two positions ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, I said a two year.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, no. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Nelson, can you, can you direct us a little bit here?
It's twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, sir. Um, good question. We have one, Deepak's term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The other four, two of them have already expired. So they will be a three-year term.
Okay.
They expired on twenty twenty-four, so they get twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. There's two, two of them that do. The other two are finishing this year. Tw- their terms expire in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So we've got two in twenty-seven and two in twenty-five. So it sounds like, uh, Dean Crump would need to either be the three year or one year. That's what it needs to be.
Well, do we want to stagger it? Did we talk about putting one in twenty-six?
We've got one in twenty-six.
We already have just Deepak. Okay.
Yeah.
So, so then the, the amendment of the motion would go back to, uh, a one or a three-year nomination.
So a three-year term?
Okay, so I, I have a motion for Dean Crump for a three-year term as an amendment. I have a second and I have a vote. If, if, uh, council accepts that, then we'll move forward with that as a correction. Would you like it voted on again or are you good to, to accept it? I'm going to accept it. Okay, so motion has already passed with that amendment and Dean Crump is a three-year term. Dean Crump is a three-year term. Okay, Councilman Kraft, you're up.
I would nominate Joe Alcrone for a three-year term ending in December of twenty twenty-seven.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second. Any further discussion on Joe? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstaining?
All abstain.
Aye.
So we have two for, one against, two abstaining. Motion fails. Would you like to make a second nomination? Is that, that is correct, sir? Got to have three to, to, for a quorum, even though you had two abstain. Councilman Kraft, we'll let you sit and think or we'll, we'll move to Tom or let you?
I thought that passed. I thought that was a two, one.
Let me, let me count the vote. I had Councilman Place one for. I had Councilman Place three for. I had Councilman Place four against, and I had two abstaining mayor and Council two.
It has to be an affirmative vote.
Correct.
You've only got two affirmative votes.
Okay. Did anybody not get their vote recorded correctly? Okay. Motion fails on nomination. Would ask you if you want to make another nomination or if you want to pass to Tom?
We can pass to Tom.
Okay.
I'll nominate John Adair.
I have a motion for John Adair. Do I have a second?
Is that for the one year or the three year?
Two.
Uh, one or three. Only two options.
One or three.
One year or a three year?
Three year.
So for a three year. Okay. So we have a motion on the table for John Adair for a three-year term. Do I have a second? Okay. Not here in a second, so we're going to move forward. Would you like to make another nomination or do you want to pass to mayor?
Elliot McKinney.
Okay. I have a motion for Elliot McKinney.
A second.
And a second for Elliot McKinney. Any further discussion for Mr. McKinney?
We need to confirm if that's one or three years, please.
That is true. I have a motion for Elliot McKinney. Do you want to do a three year?
Three.
For a three-year term. I have a second. Will you still second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Thank you, Ms. City Secretary. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one. Elliot McKinney is confirmed. Going to mayor, I would like to nominate Alex Fairley for a one-year term. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second on Mr. Fairley for a one-year term. Any further discussion on Mr. Fairley? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion passes for Alex Fairley on a one-year term with a four to one vote. We now, we now have Deepak Patel in twenty-six. We have Alex Fairley in twenty-five. We have Elliot McKinney in twenty-seven. We have Dean Crump in twenty-seven. We are missing one more one year. And so I would ask Council, if you have anybody else that you would like to revisit, otherwise I will make a nomination. Hearing no one, I'd like to nominate Randy Burkett for the remaining one-year position. Do I, I hear a second from, was that Place two? Place one. I have a motion and a second from Place one. Any further discussion on Mr. Burkett? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes for Randy Burkett on a one-year term with a four to one vote. Okay. I'm going to double check everything with my city attorney. Mr. McWilliams, was there anything that we didn't get recorded correctly on those votes? I know we were laboring that a little bit.
I think you're okay.
Okay. All right. Item ten E is, is concluded. We now are ready to adjourn. I would ask for a motion and a second and we'll get out of here.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. You're adjourned. Thank you guys for being here.
Who was the second?
I got it. I was the second.